Okay, good evening to you all. I've gavelled our meeting of the Council September 19 regularly scheduled meeting to order. Thank you all for being here this evening and thank Council for being here in a timely fashion. So we begin our meeting as we usually do by asking those of you, excuse me, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Thank you. I'm present.
Councilmember Matthews. Member Singleton. Member Dellinger. And Member Behringer.
Okay, thank you so much. The next item of business, for those of you who can stand and will, we'd ask you to stand for the place of allegiance and then we'll have the invocation by Councilmember Damien Dellinger.
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little something different for invocation. So as Garner grows, we're growing more diverse but no less welcome. And this past weekend was a significant holiday for those of the Jewish faith. So I say Shana Tova, which is a traditional greeting for Roche Ashana, which is a shortened version of a greeting that means have a good and sweet year. So what is Roche Ashana? It's the celebration of the Jewish New Year and a very important holiday on the Jewish calendar. It's the first of what is known as the High Holidays or High Holy Days, a 10-day period that ends with Yom Kippur, which is the holiest day of the Jewish year. On Roche Ashana, Jews celebrate God's creation of the world. During Roche Ashana, Jews ask God for forgiveness for the things done wrong during the past year and remind themselves not to repeat these mistakes in the coming year. In a way, Roche Ashana is an opportunity of self-improvement. It is a holiday focused on becoming your better self. So I'll end with a short prayer that was sent to me by a friend of mine. Praise to you, Adonai, our God, sovereign of the universe, for giving us life, for sustaining us, and for enabling us to reach this season. So, Shana Tova.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. I appreciate that. Our Jewish friends will as well. So we'll continue with the, with the schedule. The next item is petitions and comments. Town clerk, do you know if anybody signed up for petitions? Okay, and he wishes to speak now, not during the, okay?
He'll be right there.
Yeah, if you can have him come in. Okay, thank you. While, while our first speaker is coming to the podium, let me just give a little prefacing comment about this portion of our meeting. So this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. I believe you already done that, sir. Is that right?
Yes, I have.
Okay. The Council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petition and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agendas. So that's, all speakers need to be aware of that. We ask you if you can to hold your petition comments to about three minutes or thereabouts so we can keep things moving.
Understood.
She has your name if you want to introduce yourself.
My name is Barry Portier. I live at 508 Lawndale Street here in Garner, North Carolina, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. Briefly, we're here because we're concerned about speeders, the rate of speed through the neighborhoods. We know the town's growing exponentially and is doing it extremely fast, and traffic is one of the results of the growth. But in older neighborhoods, unlike some of the newer subdivisions where you have a house and you have a front door and they face, everything's inward to your backyards. In older neighborhoods like Lawndale on Lawndale Street and Lakeside, we have large front yards, all of us do. And at one point, I was the youngest person in the neighborhood, but those children have grown up and adults and have grandchildren and children who are back in the neighborhood. So I think if I'm correctly, on our section of Lawndale, we have nine kids, Don?
Well, approximately nine to 10 kids, just an hour's section. They play in the front lawns, and the traffic coming through Lawndale and through the left turn and crossing Lakeside, which also has big lawns, sometimes cars are moving through there at 35, 40 miles an hour. We've made contact with the police chief, and she's given us some forms and they've already, we're going to start some monitoring of the speed so they can get the data. But we would just like to be on record that it is a big problem. And everybody from the Lawndale and Lakeside and the townhomes who are here, okay? So we, we don't want to have an accident happen and then accelerate the rate at which we get something done. So we need to have some sort of preventive measures to slow some of the traffic down instead of having a tragic event make it happen.
And anybody else want to say anything? Okay.
Thank, thank you, sir, for taking your time to come in and speak on this issue and for having other neighbors to come in. I will just say to you that, and I would say to our public in general, speeding is a problem in our town. I go home every day in a 35 miles per hour road, Avisboro, and I pretty much as mayor keep my speed at 35. People speed past me all day long. I go out Timber Drive, 35 miles an hour zone there, people speed. I'm not discounting what you're saying, I'm just saying it, it concerns me greatly and particularly in our neighborhoods, you know, kids are out or whatever. To me, it shows a lack of respect for people in neighborhoods if you speed in a neighborhood or if you're driving on a road that fronts a neighborhood. To me, it's a terrible disrespect of other persons, and it bothers me greatly. So anything our police department can do to help you out, I'm sure they will. And there's a need on our interstate highways, I could go on and on for a little while, but it's a bad problem. I wish it was not a problem, but particularly in our neighborhoods, it's a serious issue.
Yeah, and also the way the older neighborhoods are laid out with front yards. There's new construction places, there is no front yard and everything is in, like you were addressing with that new division going up, we said where the kids are going to play. In the older neighborhoods, they play in the front yard. So thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you, sir, sure enough. Excuse me for pontificating there, but that's something on my mind as well. Was there anyone else who came tonight with the idea of speaking at this time to Council? Okay, if they're hearing or seeing none, we will move to the next items. I believe the next item is Council, the adoption of the agenda for tonight.
I'd like to make a amendment to the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to move that item number two listed under new and old business, that item number two only be conducted as a public hearing, and items one, three, and four will still be new and old business. So item two would stay in the same order but be conducted as a public hearing. Also, I'd like to add, we have a closed session item as noted by the attorney. I also like to add another closed session item, potential litigation and use citation of the Carolina General Statute 143-138, 11 subset A, subset, subset three, and add that to our closed session for tonight.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Singleton, and I believe Mr. Vance seconded that. So Council, with those, that request for amendment noted, are you prepared to, to vote to approve the agenda? If you are, vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. So we will, we will conduct the agenda in accordance with that amendment, sure enough. Okay, so the next item is the consent agenda. There are six items on that agenda as well. What is your pleasure on the consent agenda, Ms. Council?
Oh, accept. Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number five and move it to the end of old and new business. That's the Town Hall Annex Amendment Two.
Is there a second to Mr. Dellinger's request? Okay. All right, any other questions about that? Thanks, sir. All right, if you favor that amendment to the consent agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, no? And it is so ordered. Okay, I believe that covers that item, and we will now move to...
We need to adopt items one, two, three, four, and six on the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
You're right, okay.
I'll move, move that motion forward.
Second.
Okay. Council, you're aware of those items, and so if you favor that motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, you can vote no, and there is none, okay? Thank you, thank you. All right, we will move then to item number one under new and old business. And I'm not sure if he's here, but the presenter is listed as Mr. Rob Rudolph.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
If I can just give a brief introduction, and then I believe the representatives, they are here.
Okay, all right.
But just to refresh Council's memory, last summer, we were negotiating, last summer and fall, negotiating a development agreement with the Polte Home Company regarding improvements to White Oak Road that would facilitate the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of White Oak and Bryan Roads. We did eventually, after a number of public hearings and meetings, adopted or Council approved a development agreement that would facilitate that, where Polte would take the lead in performing, in acquiring the necessary right-of-way after getting plans approved and then doing the construction, and then they would receive contributions from other developments in the impact area, which was defined as a certain area around that intersection and projects of a size that would require traffic impact analysis to be done. Within that development agreement, there was a schedule that was probably fairly ambitious. It has been delayed only recently, in August, was the corridor plans for the improvements to White Oak Road approved by the town and by NCDOT. So that was a necessary portion that had to be completed before acquisition of the right-of-way and easements could be done. So I have been asking Polte for an update on where they are with the acquisition process because there was a milestone within that document that if right-of-way was not acquired before December 31, 2003, then Polte would be able to pay a, a fee to the town and they would not be obligated to complete the work. So we've been talking to Polte about the need to adjust that schedule, and so at this point, I would ask, I believe Collier Marsh is here, is the attorney representing Polte in this matter?
Question, I thought we, Mr. Singleton just made a motion to move item two to public hearings.
To be conducted as a public hearing but kept in the same order. My understanding was this information...
Okay, just so we could hear this first, yeah.
That you could receive this information before discussing the Mahlers Creek project, which is in the impact area.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe here on behalf of Polte. Ms. Jones did a great job of providing some of the history. I think we're all familiar with this development agreement and the, the importance of the transportation improvements that it relates to. So this was a development agreement that was approved back in December of 2022, and Polte took the lead on behalf of a number of developers in this same corridor to actually go ahead and construct the widening improvements needed to then facilitate the future installation of a signal at Bryan Road and White Oak. So they took the lead on that, they put together a development agreement that set forth various milestones that were necessary to complete the project, also in connection with their Walters Buffalo project, kind of making sure that everything was in sync. So the short version of what Polte's been doing is they've been using their best efforts to proceed as best they can with all the necessary milestones, not only with the development agreement, but the corresponding portions of, of their project, their Walters Buffalo project. And so as we stand here today, they're prepared to proceed and to meet the deadlines as best they can and to complete the project within the originally envisioned timeframe, so all of the White Oak Road corridor improvements that are covered by this development agreement. Ms. Jones hit on a point that I think is the one that's worthy of discussion, which is the timeframe for right-of-way acquisition. So based on correspondence I've seen leading up to the meeting, this meeting tonight, within that development agreement, there is a provision that says that if Polte is unable to obtain the necessary right-of-way for these improvements, that they would then pay a fee in lieu, and that deadline was December 31 of this year. So that's coming up quickly. We all know that in the original timeline for the project and the milestones, the right-of-way acquisition was put as March of 2023. I think we all know in hindsight that that, that date was a little misguided and that one of the prerequisites to obtaining the right-of-way was to have approved plans that actually showed the right-of-way that needed to be required. Those plans were only approved a few weeks ago, so well after that March of 2023 deadline. But once those were approved by the DOT and the town, Polte's taken off, they're communicating with those property owners to obtain the necessary right-of-way. Optimistic that we could get it done within that original December timeframe, but just to, you know, make it clear, we're committed to honoring all the obligations and are certainly open to extending that timeframe so that we don't trigger that fee-in-lie provision so that everything plans as proceeded and ultimately is concluded within the original timeframe. So I guess the short version is that some of the milestones are a little out of order as originally envisioned, but the project's still on track and we're, we're prepared to honor all obligations under the agreement.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I suspect Council may have some questions for you, so I will see, I'll start with the gentleman to my left, Mr. Singleton, if he has anything.
I think the question, Mr. Marsh, is in regards to the, there may be other key dates, but in regards to the right-of-way, we're six months behind, where it'd be, you know, the time to do it, and we know that sometimes with the price of land nowadays, you know, this acquiring right-of-way can be a challenge. So what type of another timeframe are we talking, adding six months to December 31st? I'm at June 30th, are we talking about six months from now to March 31st, which is a year from the, I mean, well, what's a reasonable timeframe? I want us to, whatever we decide and come up with a timeframe, we should add 30 days to it or 60 days.
Yeah, so I think that we, based on discussions we've had, we'd hope to finish within the original timeframe, but yeah, I think the numbers we talked about were in the range of 60 days. We're happy to discuss and come up with an appropriate timeframe though and, and propose that to the Council.
If I may interject, if the town, the town could go and condemn the property, I would need at least 60 days, and that's really ambitious to do that, to force this, but it would be better if it could be cooperative. So I, I agree, I, we'd at least have to add 60 days to the December 31st and potentially longer, but that's something that we've been trying to work, you know, that we'll have to work out with Pol, with Polte and then bring those dates back to Council. But we wanted to get, make sure that they're committed to extending the dates as necessary.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Matthews.
Not this time.
Okay, Ms. Behringer. Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
Say that the milestones are being met, yet I've not seen them, and I know our attorney's asked for them, and she's not seen them to pass to us, so, and they're not in the agenda, they weren't sent ahead of time, we don't have anything to hold you or your client accountable because you've not produced any timelines on your progress. So when you say, oh, we look like we're going to hit December 31st, I see no evidence of what you've done to date, and you're six months behind on what you were supposed to have done.
So I, as far as the timelines from December approval of the development agreement to now, I, I think it's a little unfair to place all the blame on Polte because the prerequisite to getting the right-of-way was to have approved plans. And it's necessary because if we go to a homeowner and say, we need to take this much land, we need to know exactly what that is. And that was contemplated in the development agreement, that certain aspects, the, the process starts 60 days after, it has to be completed within 60 days of plan approval. So we submitted our plans and then went through review cycles that took longer than they typically do with the town, with DOT, it went through two review cycles. So Polte's turnaround times were quick, the reviews took a long time, so certain aspects are beyond Polte's control. I think we've all seen it, projects can become complicated when you have multiple layers of review. Timelines don't always work out as you originally planned, but they've pursued it diligently. They couldn't start the right-of-way acquisition until they had those plans, and that came much later in the process, until they had the approved plans. But as soon as they had them, they've started that process. I think that tonight's meeting, we'd love to give you more information as far as, this is exactly how many homeowners we've completed the process with, but based on the timeline, we haven't reached that point. More information to come, and we're continuing those discussions with the town attorney to make sure that everybody knows where we are in the process and that we're proceeding as diligently as we can.
That is kind of what my point was, you've not submitted anything to the town to show us what your progress is, and we're in September, got three months, for the time it would take for us to approve an extension of December, we have to get on the agenda, we have to discuss it. I, we, you can understand we're not in a position of confidence on what you're saying because there's no documentation to back up what you're saying.
The documentation are the plans which triggered the timelines to complete the right-of-way acquisition. The plans are reviewed with the town of, that are more than open and, and known to all the parties.
I have no further questions at this moment.
In reference to the right-of-way date possibly being pushed out further, do you have an idea if it's going to impact the construction completion date?
So within the schedule as we foresee it, no. If that's something that needs to be revisited, we would, but the, the goal is really not to slow down the project at all. I think we want to move as quickly as possible, which is one of the reasons why we want to push out that deadline as much as is needed.
The start date for initial, for, for letters is when?
So the milestone in the Exhibit D of the, of the development agreement, its completion was May 2025. I don't have a deadline for start date, but, but that wouldn't change under the current scenario.
Okay, no further questions.
Okay, I'll make one more circuit around. Do I feel anything? Great.
Just ask Attorney Jones, so are you looking for some feedback from us on, they suggested time to extend it. I know Mr. Marsh has offered 60 days, I think we also need to have more than that, but you said condemning would take at least 60 days, so that's not a, that's too compact of a timeframe, so do you have a suggestion?
At this point, given the delay, I would probably go with longer than that or potentially changing the trigger to something from a date certain to certain things happening. So as it was contemplated in the original agreement, they would get their plans approved and then within 60 days have the title certificates and also work on appraisals of the properties so that they could show, they need to show good faith effort that they've tried to acquire the property from the property owners before then I would start a condemnation process if they're unsuccessful. So there is time then that, there are 60 days, but if we wait the 60 days from the plan approval, there's really, it would be very tight to get a condemnation... plan approval, there's really, it would be very tight to get a condemnation case filed because you have to give 30 days notice before you can even file that, regardless of whatever notice Pulte might give to the, the town would have to do on its own. So I think 60 days might be too ambitious. But yeah, if you have feedback, what I anticipate is that we'll work out these dates or triggers and come back with amendments to the development agreement. And I would recommend that that be a public hearing. We also need to have the spot mobility agreements with respect to the NC DOT funding executed. So we have to make sure that those agreements also have the same kind of dates and timelines because NC DOT will give us a timeframe for which the traffic signal has to be installed by. So we have to know that that works into the overall schedule.
Well, obviously 60 days is tight and I know you've been dealing with right-of-way issues with the project right down the road from this with the roundabout and that's taking quite a bit of time. So we need more than 60 days. We need at least 120, if not May of 2024. I'm just looking.
Okay, yeah.
Just make sure we cover it. I'll listen to others. We have a professional engineer who did this for a living while I'll get his feedback down there.
Go ahead, Mr. Vance, yeah.
Well, to respond to Mr. Singleton's question in reference to timeframe for right-of-way, yes, it can be very difficult and time-consuming to include with utility relocations if you have any. So that can be, that can blow up your schedule if you, if you, if you have those problems with right-of-way. So it's always hard to predict, but I would say that, as was mentioned by the attorney, that 60 days is very aggressive, longer timeframe to ensure, to see if they are having any problems with the appraisals or whatever. And if they have to go through the condemnation process, hopefully gives them enough time to go through that process. But a cushion of 120 days based upon how many parcels you have to acquire? You have any idea?
My recollection was four to five.
Four to five.
Property owners. There might be more parcels impacted, but unique property owners.
Unique property owners. So yes, I would say, I would say on the conservative side of 120 days, based upon, you're just starting, you just got your plans approved, you say about a couple of weeks ago? So you have, you've got a lot of work to do. So yeah.
Work is in, works now, in progress.
Yes, got you. Okay, but that's, that will be my, my analysis of right-of-way based upon what I've heard thus far.
And if I could correct that, I believe based on the information that Pulte has provided, it's five parcels with three different property owners. So, so three unique sets of property owners, but five parcels impacted.
Okay, well, let me see if further council members want to weigh in. I get a motion at some point, right?
So is that 120 days a levelable timeframe, I guess, for you guys or?
Right, so we're saying 120 days from December 31st. I think that's a reasonable timeframe.
Okay.
But we would have to, we do have to adopt an amendment to make that change before December 31st.
We're going to extend it 120 days. We need monthly updates and status reports because we're not getting them. And at the request of our attorney, she's not getting them. So we need that. I would also entertain that the amendment, we've had some success in the past with liquidated damages related to deadlines. I think we would need to examine that as well because these timelines were not realistic the first time and I knew they weren't and they're not. So we need to hold you accountable to what you say you're going to do because you haven't done what you said you're going to do. So if we're going to give you more opportunity to do it, we're going to hold you accountable to it.
I would say that all parties need to be held accountable beyond Pulte because the biggest challenge to date has been review turnarounds and that's something beyond their control. So just want to keep in mind that they're moving as quickly as they're possible, as they can, but other parties are involved in this process that can control those timelines.
But nothing's impeding you from meeting the information requests from the council, correct?
We're happy to continue the dialogue and provide whatever information is needed.
Mr. Vance.
In reference to what Mr. Dillinger just said in reference pertaining to status reports, I think that's reasonable to have monthly status reports to find out where you are in the, in the, in the process so that we could be aware of if you're having any issues when it comes to right-of-way condemnation and things of that nature. So we'll, so it will not be something that hits us at the last minute. We'll know periodically throughout the time. And that's, and I'm thinking that should be something that's doable.
Understood. I think we've just had regular communication with the town attorney, so if it needs to be put in a more formal manner, I'm sure that can be done.
Anything?
We should direct the attorney to give us, get an amendment to the agreement back to us as soon as possible so we can update it, excuse me, so we can approve that amendment so we know how to project forward. And also we can add the issues Mr. Dillinger mentioned can be added also. We can put it on there for consideration, but monthly reports should be, should happen period, but yes. Get that to us sometime in the near future. Before December 31st, but I think we want to do it long before then.
Right, I'm hoping we can work out the date issue and whatever other amendments need to be done and get that on your agenda as a public hearing because the first development agreement had to be done by a public hearing. So of course that requires having the amendments ready and being available when the public hearing notice goes out. So I'd like to get it done in October, but.
Any other council member want to weigh in on this? Yeah.
And in reference to if you're, if you're able, you have been, the Pulte has been given a six-month extension on the time from December 31st to look like June, whatever it is in June. If you're able to complete the right-of-way before that timeframe, will that delay any movement when it comes to the start of construction? Will you be able to adjust your schedule? I'm just, just a question out there to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal is at this moment to not need the time. So we want this to proceed as quickly as possible. As soon as that, you know, the right-of-way, whatever the next step is, there's no intent to delay, it's just to keep moving on the project.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing, but I don't know if any persons came here this evening wanting to speak on this matter. I would consider that. Is there anyone in the audience? Okay, I have at least one person. If you would, come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hello, I am Elizabeth Morrison. I'm actually the HOA Board President for Everwood, which backs up to this development. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The main thing that I have a question on is.
You're here for the discussion of the Mahlers Creek subdivision, correct? That's not right now, that's next.
Oh, that's second.
Just may.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, misunderstanding.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton.
This is for the road improvements at White Oak and Bryan Road.
Okay, so with that clarification, is there anyone who desires to speak on that matter? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I believe, I don't know if a formal motion is in order. We want, we were asking the attorney to, to present back to us wording that council can approve, is that correct?
Right, once, I've worked with the Pulte representatives to have those amendments to the development agreement. I'll let you know that and then we'll determine, you know, when it can go to a public hearing.
Okay.
Because the amendments have to be, the document has to be drafted when the public hearing notice is posted. It has to be available to the public at that time under state law.
Right. So from my perspective, we have concluded that particular item at this point in time? Is there anything else that needs to be done? I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, not for this item.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. And so you have some directions there. We'll look forward to hearing from you. Okay, we will now go to what is numbered item two on the agenda. And as noted in the amendment, this will be a public hearing. And so it will be conducted that way. If you wish to speak, ideally you would have signed up with our town clerk. But anyway, we'll hear first of all from staff, from Mr. Trezenberg, and I will formally open the public hearing at this time.
Mr. Mayor, we had two people sign up beforehand, but I don't think everyone signed up. So I'm going to give this back to the clerk, the sign-in sheet, so that anyone's interested to speak can sign up while the presentation is happening.
Thank you very much, yes. If you can get the names to me, I'll be happy to call. Welcome, Mr. Trezenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is coming back to you after about, I think, a 21-month hiatus back from December of 2021. Decision at that time was stated that council did not want to consider a decision on this until there was something in place and going for the preceding item. And since that time, a few months ago, we did approve the Golden Trace subdivision, which is contributing to that road widening project. And at that time, the applicant had reached out to us about asking to have this matter brought back before you for continued discussion and consideration. So I will give just an overview. I'm happy to go into anything further. Given that it has been so, been a while, this report has changed hands with staff and we've had a new UDO adopted in the middle of all that. So we did update the staff report from the last council meeting and highlighted all of the, put the new information in blue so that hopefully that would assist in your review of the staff report. And so just to recap, this was a conditional planned district rezoning request, so for a planned residential development under the old ordinance with the applicant being Burton Engineering and the owners Bryan Road LLC and the South Park Development Corp. So at the time, the request was to rezone about 8.6 acres from R12. I believe that's the part that was owned by South Park Development Corp. And then approximately 63.8 acres from Single Family Residential 40, which I believe was, is owned by the Bryan Road LLC. The proposal was for a development of about 170 single-family homes on three different lot sizes at an overall density of 2.4 units per acre. So now, of course, since we adopted the new ordinance and the zoning was changed in July 5 of 2022, the zoning today is actually then R4 in place of the R12 and Rural Agricultural in place of the R40. Again, just a brief, here's the site location. The improvements that we were just discussing are going to be right off the map in this vicinity here. Bryan Road coming up through here and the sharp corner there at Fox Walk. An updated zoning map now, so you do see here the R4 in the existing Everwood and part of Fox Walk and then R2 up here at Hillendale, the RA in place of the old R40. And this is all in the Lower Swift Creek overlay, which does mandate a no more than 30% impervious for any project. Did just want to flash up the zoning history. There's not been a lot of zoning in the immediate area because things were put on hold while the road issues were being worked out. However, there were a couple of projects, one that was in progress and another one that was right outside. So we had the Signature Apartments there at Salt Hill Road that was approved and also Ball Rentals, which was the self-storage facility right at the intersection. So again, just a summary of the existing zoning, that 63.87 acres currently zoned RA would entitle someone by right to one dwelling unit per acre. You see some of the other uses that are allowed in that district as well, including schools, churches, assembly uses, some of the utility-type things and agricultural-themed uses, as well as parks and smaller residential types, type uses. The 8.6 acres is now zoned R4, a lot of the same things, single-family duplexes, small group care, again, your churches, schools and assembly uses, and then parks and only minor utilities. And again, at four dwelling units per acre. Just a reminder that in the proposed conditions, it is for single-family detached only and that maximum density would not exceed 2.4 dwelling units per acre. There were some deviations as part of that original PRD request that were asked for and it does require a specific finding and that is in your adoption materials for consideration. Also a deviation in the setbacks. There were some modifications and a column for clarity added since the planning commission meeting, but you can see those there. Again, there were a few edits from the planning commission meeting that came to you in the December meeting. So there is just a high-level overview of conditions five through 24. So we do have a 2,400 square foot minimum, 10-inch overhangs. They will all be built on crawl space, so there will be no slabs of any kind, no vinyl sliding, so all hardy plank, stone, brick veneers, two-car garages. There is greenway construction, about a quarter mile of public and a mile and a quarter of private recreational conditions and a 14% minimum tree save. And traffic calming at two interior connections. Subdivisionary approval. And then they have added this condition number 25, which does reflect the development agreement. So this is the same condition that was approved as part of the Golden Trace approval. So they are required to enter into that cost-share agreement and make the fee paid. And just to kind of revisit the traffic impact analysis that was done for the project. So this constructor pay full fee in lieu of a dedicated right-turn lane, that has been absorbed into the widening project. And so that is now, would be incorporated into the development agreement participation. They would still be on the hook with DOT for signal modifications at Timber Drive in White Oak, again, to allow for better north-south traffic movement. And they would still be contributing that 5% payment towards the signal costs. And then, of course, on Bryan Road, there's the widening as well as the dedicated left and right tapers. In terms of access, there is a pinch point in the site right here that we talked about last time. The Twin Berry connection, while shown in the master plan, is not required for other purposes within the UDO other than it is an existing stub. So that one could potentially be terminated with a hammerhead or some other kind of permanent turnaround if the developer wanted to offer that up. It is over 150 feet, so it cannot be left as is. It does need a proper turnaround put in, but the connection is not necessarily required otherwise. Connection here at Capertree, however, would be to allow for the number of homes that would be back in this area and to continue to have two points of access. Again, the developer did agree to the condition to traffic calming along either of these connections, should they be made. In terms of the plan, it is just over 72 acres. You see the three products there. Product, we'll start with product B would be 70 to 80 units, 60 feet minimum lot width. Then you have product A, which would be 55 to 65 units at a 7,200 square foot and 50, 50-foot minimum lot width. And product C, 30 to 40 units, a 70-foot minimum lot width at 12,000 square feet minimum. So those largest units are depicted here in red and purposely located directly adjacent to the existing. to the existing subdivisions to more closely reflect the lot sizes that exist there. The next size is here in blue and been incorporated primarily here in the back part of the subdivision. And then up here, closest to Bryan Road, not so far back in the subdivision, except for maybe a couple right in here, would be the 7,200 square foot lots, the greenway, public greenway, private trail extensions. The main part, the main amenity will be here and a pedestrian connection throughout. In terms of the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, I did want to just revisit the consistency stuff one more time. This would be technically inconsistent with the plan because the density is not actually high enough. However, single-family uses are the predominant use that would be called for in the medium-density residential from, so from that aspect, there is some level of consistency. Transportation Plan recommends Bryan Road as a three-lane facility. They are widening to that standard and to accommodate the turn lanes that are required. So therefore, it would be considered consistent with the town's adopted transportation plan as proposed. And also the Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan, the site was not in a designated parkland search area. However, there is a greenway path along Mahler's Creek, which is located along the west side of the project. They have included that and will be constructing it. So as such, the staff TRC also found the project consistent with that plan. So the planning commission did debate it, and we've summarized the points there in the staff report. In a unanimous vote, they did adopt the consistency statement. There was the note of, as part of their vote, they also did recommend their approval with the suggestion that the deviation allowing the 7,200 square foot lots be removed. There was some debate and discussion about that because that actually would move it into more inconsistency because the density would drop even further. So there was a little bit of, I think, mixed feelings about that, but that was ultimately what they did add to their vote. And so it is back before you as it was before for the findings of reasonableness. And as noted at the last council meeting, there was a comments about buffers and grading. The traffic again at White Oak and Bryan Roads was a big point of discussion in overall traffic safety in the area. So at that time, on December 6 of 2021, that was when you all voted unanimously to table the case until such time as there was more clarity for resolving that matter. The staff recommendation where still supports CZPD 2002 as presented and reflected in the report, recommending town council approval of the planning commission's statement of consistency and further recommending approval of the zoning amendment request as a reasonable one. And we do have both, as we do have both possible motions highlighted for you and reasons that we have identified why you might find it reasonable or not. And that's all I have for you tonight. The applicant would also like to give you a refresher as to what has happened since they last talked to you. And I know there are folks here from the neighboring communities that would also like to speak. And so I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you have for me at this time. Otherwise, like I say, the applicant is prepared to give their presentation and also be able to respond to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Treesenberg, for your thorough report. Counsel, I'll start with Ms. Behringer if you have questions for Mr. Treesenberg.
No.
You're singled in.
Wait till we hear the presentation from the applicant.
Mr. Dellinger.
Just a question on the devia, on the setbacks. And planning commission's concerns are the same as mine on these five-foot and 10-foot setbacks. And I think it's interesting because there's a solution if you get rid of those setbacks. If you make them normal, you say the density increases. Well, there's a solution for that density increase, reduce the number of units, right? That would decrease the density, is that not correct?
Yes, decreasing the units would decrease the density.
Yeah, so to eliminate those five and 10-foot combined side yards, which I think are, when you see them go up in town, a lot of them are down that way. They're very close, they're not as safe from a firefighting perspective, as has been noted. It is code, but the fire department has said they're not as safe. So again, yes, the density gets bigger, but you can change that and get rid of some units. So that's my only comment on that.
Mr. Vance?
I'll wait for the applicant.
Okay, down here, singling.
I'll wait to hear.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, okay, Mr. Matthews.
Wait also.
Okay. All the questions for Mr. Treesenberg? Okay, Ms. Treesenberg, I believe we are prepared to hear from the applicant at this time. If you'll come forward and tell us who you are, what your address is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's been a long time since we've been before you, so we're happy to be back to talk to you about Mahler's Creek. I'm here tonight with Rich Barta with Core Properties and Lyle Overcash with Kim Lee Horn, and he can speak to the traffic concerns and the traffic issues that we've been working out in these last two years since we came before you.
Does the clerk have your name and information?
Yes, Pam Porter with TMT LA Associates.
Thank you.
Apologies, I got right into it. Am I allowed to click with this? Okay, okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Jeff, for the overview. I think Jeff did a really good job of just rehashing our project, but just a couple quick things. Our site is located on Bryan Road between Benson Road and White Oak Road. It's 72 acres, it's in Wake County. We are adjacent to the Fox Haven neighborhood and the Everwood neighborhood, which is to the south. And as you know, our request includes rezoning to planned residential development PRD, zoning district, as well as an annexation to the town to garner limits. And much of my presentation will serve as a reminder, this project was voluntarily tabled to resolve the traffic issues that have come up with our project as well as other projects in the area, and we wanted to resolve the issues related to public safety and traffic congestion. This plan is the one that you saw a minute ago in Jeff's presentation. It has not changed, but just a refresher that we do have three different lot sizes. As Jeff mentioned, generally speaking, the larger lots are next to the other existing larger lots, having like-to-like development adjacent, concentrating the density towards the front of the project, which is pretty typical of most developments. You have density at the front, and it gets less density as you go towards the back. Thank you. These are some of our notable conditions from before. I won't go over all these, I'll just highlight a couple. So each house will be constructed with hardy plank, masonry, brick or stone, or shake. We do not have vinyl siding that was prohibited as a result of conversations we had with neighbors and with planning commission way back when. A varied color palette shall utilize, be utilized on homes throughout the subdivision, and that's to make sure that all the houses are unique and they're not all the same going down the road. Each single-family home shall have a crawl space, slab foundations are going to be prohibited. Our houses will have a minimum heated square feet of, a minimum of 2,400 heated square feet. Each house shall have one of the following, a deck, covered porch, sunroom, or a minimum of 100 square foot of patio. At least 50% of the homes shall have a minimum of 100 square foot brick or footstone masonry on the front elevation. And again, vinyl siding is not going to be allowed, but we will have allowance for vinyl accents such as windows and other vinyl decorations that are typically found on new homes. And Mahler's Creek will meet or exceed the Everwood HOA. So just real quick, I wanted to say that a lot of the stuff that we've done in our proposal, less some of the smaller lots, is very similar to Everwood in terms of home size, lot size, and what the homes are going to look like. There's a lot of homes in the neighborhood that are brick or stone or have some combination thereof. There's varying, there's varying home sizes, but they're all very comparable to the ones that we're proposing in our neighborhood. And this slide just shows examples of home style and the architectural elements that will be included in our neighborhood. And the projected home price, when we last spoke about two years ago, we projected the home prices to be between $500 and $600,000. That's still the case, but it's probably going to be towards the higher end of that range, given today's market, which has obviously changed since two years ago. This slide illustrates the various amenities that we are including as part of our project. Just a quick reminder of what we're doing, a pool and a clubhouse, a dog park and a tot lot where A is, that's the main amenity at the front of the neighborhood. And we also have various mini-parks throughout, picnic gazebo and dog park, private trails, and we are contributing the public greenway trail that runs along Mahler's Creek on the west side of the project. And we also have the six-foot side path and private trails that run through our neighborhood. And this is a slide, we had this in our last presentation, we had adjusted some of our trail locations, but the intent remains the same as we've been proposing and committing to since the beginning. We have a minimum of 1.25 miles of private trail and side paths, and the side path is a wider sidewalk, so it creates continuous loops through the neighborhood for residents to walk. And we also have a minimum of a quarter mile of public greenway. And those numbers have not changed, although some of the locations may have shifted some. Excuse me. We were asked to provide a benefits to the community list. I'm not going to go through all of these unless you would like me to read them all. I'll just hit on a couple of highlights. So number one, Mahler's Creek will be quality private development and increased housing creates increased tax base. And there's a note from the comprehensive plan that basically speaks to what we're trying to achieve with this development. A variety of lot sizes presents the opportunity for residents to age in place. A variety of lot sizes also means a variety of price points to help accommodate various income levels from somebody that lives in a smaller house that wants to move to a bigger house in the neighborhood, families, the whole aging in place thing is a really big thing. And if people are able to buy a smaller house, maybe buy a bigger house, and then go back and buy a smaller house in the neighborhood and not have to move around a lot, it could be a really big benefit. Mahler's Creek was designed to also be sensitive to surrounding communities. Everwood is the neighborhood directly to the south. It's zoned R4, and the average lot sizes are between 12,500 square feet and 14,000 square feet. The largest lot in our development, which are adjacent to Everwood, are a minimum of 12,000 square feet. So we're just shy of some of the minimum lot sizes in that neighborhood, but it is pretty comparable. Homes on the larger lots will be similar in size to Everwood. The smaller lots will, included in our development, are located in the center in front of the neighborhood, and they are comparable to other neighbor, other adjacent neighborhoods such as Bingham Station and Grove at White, the Grove at White Oak, and many other neighborhoods that are in this area as well. Mahler's Creek includes a variety of amenities, which I just noted a minute ago, and it'll be a selling point for residents wanting to move into the neighborhood, but also a reason for them to stay. Resident longevity in a neighborhood makes the neighborhood more desirable to future, potential future buyers. And we are also, again, providing a portion of the public greenway trail, that 0.25 miles minimum, and it will help to complete the Mahler's Creek Corridor Greenway Trail. Lyle Overcash is going to speak more to the road improvements, but Mahler's Creek obviously is going to increase traffic. We're providing more houses, more cars, that's just a byproduct of new development. But as such, the developer is making a total contribution of $1,181,296.43 towards roadway improvements. And again, Lyle can break that down a little bit better than I can. And we are creating connections via roadway sidewalk network and connections to the public greenway trail, which will allow convenient movement of traffic, pedestrian, and vehicular, or to facilitate access to neighborhoods for emergency service vehicles. And I'm going to call Lyle up to speak more about the offsite roadway improvements because that is in his wheelhouse and is outside of my wheelhouse.
We'll hear from him, there may be questions for you, but we can bring you back after his presentation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good evening, Lyle Overcash with Kim Lee Horn, 421 Fettwell Street in Raleigh. As Pam mentioned, going back in time, we had an estimate for our frontage widening. We had about 2,000 linear feet of widening along Bryan Road. Back in December of '21, we had estimated that about $903,000, $904,000. Been checking around with price escalation over the last couple of years, we're probably looking at, that may be about 20% low. So I would, I would estimate the actual cost of the frontage widening is going to exceed $1 million, probably closer to $1.1 million now due to just inflation here recently. As you heard from the Pulte attorney, we've been working with those guys over the summer to calculate our share of the developer agreement. And based from their engineer, our share comes out to about $278,000. So total, probably is going to be in excess of $1.2, probably closer to $1.3 million in roadway improvements for the development. Any questions regarding the road improvements?
Yeah. Counsel, questions for this witness here, Mr. Vance, anything?
Yes, and I have several questions. One pertaining to the completion of the road improvements before anything happens with the development. Am I correct in saying that before, if this is even approved, before development starts, the, the, the road improvements must be in place first?
Our original build date in the TIA was 2025, and if I heard Collier correctly, I think they're still shooting for 2025 for the completion of the roadway. So I think we're still in line there. I'm not, we may lag behind that date, so I'm not sure if Rich has an updated timeline for completion of the neighborhood, but I think we're still on track.
And when you say on track, meaning that once the roadway, once the improvements are made, that's when you will start, soon after the roadway improvements are made?
It's tough to determine when the lots are going to come online, but it, you know, again, it's difficult to predict a couple of years out when the lots are going to come online and when the roadway is going to be completed, but they're, you know, it's going to be the same, the same timeline is what we're thinking right now.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, I'll give recognition.
Questions at this time?
Okay.
Just to clarify, do you have a timeline as far as when the stoplight will be installed?
Stoplight was funded by the Spot Mobility Project by NC DOT, and they're incorporating that with the construction of the turn lanes. So it'll all go, go in at the same time.
Okay. How much time from today?
Based on the timeline and the developer agreement, I think they're in 2025, and Collier seemed to indicate, even with the delay and right-of-way acquisition, they still felt pretty good about that date. So it's 2025.
Two years.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're singling.
I have a question for Ms. Porter when we get through with Mr. Overcash.
Nothing this time.
Nothing for this gentleman, okay. Anybody else before we bring Ms. Porter back? Okay.
I have a question on the TIA, and this is kind of unusual for a project to sit for two years. And so how accurate is the TIA that was done in July of 2021?
Well, we've had a couple of things happen. I live just south of here, down on NC 50, so I commute up on 50, and we've seen a tremendous kind of shift over to 40, once 40 has been partially opened from the bypass end. A little bit of autobahn going on out there, going back to your early, early statements about speeding, it's quite remarkable. But I've been interested to see the shift from White Oak and Cornwallis over back on to 40. And then again, once the interchange is open over by Westview Elementary, you know, there'll be another shift of traffic. So, you know, original thinking back in the day was, you know, as traffic keeps growing, we'd kind of be shuffling some of that traffic over off on, back on to, to 40. And, and when we go back and have to optimize the signal timings at Timber and White Oak, we'll go back and have to recount and go through a process of studying that intersection again. And so, yeah, go back to your question, July 21, you know, we had a lot of growth built into that, background growth rates, we're assuming other developments would be constructed. Stuff is kind of paused in this area because of the developer agreement. So, you know, it's tough to say at this moment, but I would say that volumes are probably... So, you know, it's tough to say at this moment, but I would say that volumes are probably fairly similar.
I'm curious, because my notes from then indicate there was some concern that it's still sort of being COVID irregular, that the TIA was done when school wasn't in. South Garner High School has grown. There are developments that are now coming out of the ground that were proposed, and now there are new ones that have been approved. The Pulte is a perfect example. I don't remember how many units that is. And so one of my concerns is the TIA being updated would be helpful, not just for this project, but would be helpful in general to kind of gauge what the reality of the traffic situation is in that corridor where there are only two outlets, New Bethel Church Road and White Oak Road. And the, the speed at which the houses are coming out of the ground, I can't remember the name of the project, the development off of, across from Sutton Springs, do you know the name of that project? Oak Grove?
Oak Grove.
There are 10 houses a, a week out of nowhere, and so that traffic is, it's not just background, it's, it's now real traffic. So I do have some concerns on the staleness of the impact analysis.
Yeah, we understand that. I, I'm not sure if we, if we went back and updated the TIA, would change the design that's going in at Bryan. It's probably going to remain the same, and they had forecasted an increase of about 12,000 in the capacity of White Oak Road through that, through that segment. And so we're going to use about 10% of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
One other comment. I understand about traffic impact analysis and that sort of thing, but at the present, two years is a long time. At the present, if you're trying to make a turn either north or south off of Bryan Road, there are potholes there, there are popouts, and the site distance is terrible, which increases the danger of auto accidents, and there have been some there. Is there any way to encourage that that stoplight get put in, have a priority rather than a last-minute thing or last, last on the list, because the safety factors there are just terrible?
Yes, we went, when we did the signal war analysis, because we, we were kind of at the forefront of this problem, identified this problem. So we did the signal war analysis back in '21, and we, if I recall, we pulled about three years of accident data, and there had been five accidents, I believe, over that five-year period. We haven't gone back and taken a look at that. You know, a lot of the intersections, you know, over the summer, they, you know, tend to grow up around the intersections, and you do lose site distance in those areas. We can, we can check with the guys with Pulte and DOT and see if there's a way to, you know, put that signal up ahead of time and maybe put it out of the way. But to put it out of the way, the widening is probably going to require right-of-way easements, and so you're kind of back in that same, same loop.
I understand that. What I would appreciate, if you would, follow up on that, because human lives are, they're costly.
Yes, ma'am.
And there have been too many close calls there. And even in the wintertime, the site distance, especially looking down Bryan Road, is, is just practically nonexistent.
Yeah, it is a tough intersection to navigate.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Lyles? I think I've covered everybody. So you want to hear from Ms. Porter again, I believe?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Barta.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for your time tonight. I just wanted to address a question that Councilman Vance had for the timing of this prop, you know, project relative to the roadway improvement. So we've committed our fair share, and Pulte will be taking the lead on all those improvements. And I agree fully with Kathy, this is the priority. We want, we want to make sure those roads are safe for everybody, especially the high school people driving around there. But as, as a practical matter for our development, we're, we're courting people, but we don't have, you know, we're not under contract to anybody at this point. So by the time we get through the contract and their diligence, we're probably nine to 12 months realistically before they would close. And they got a year of site development, and then they got a year of construction, roughly. So we're realistically, I don't anticipate, you know, looking at COs for anything out there until late '25, early '26, maybe to mid-'26, depending on, you know, timing. But we understand those traffic improvements need to be in place before people are in those houses. So I think we had that discussion before, maybe doing site work but not having COs until the improvements are in place. We're okay with that, okay? Just want to let you know that, okay?
Thanks, sure.
Any other questions?
More comment. I know this sounds like I'm beating a dead horse, but that, a stoplight was needed there before this development ever was proposed. This is not new. It is something that has been desperately needed for a very long time. We've all heard that, that old statement, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. So I'm going to expand that a little bit, and the shortest distance between high school students getting out of school and food is a straight line. And they're going to be going straight to White Oak, which increases the traffic issues because they're hungry and they're reckless, and we've just got to have some help there sooner rather than later, regardless of what might be built as far as subdivisions.
Yes, I would second and third that motion. I think we, even that light needs to get in place, and Pulte will have the brains and the lead on that, and they have the, you know, design. And, and, I mean, just to your point, you know, that, we're RTA, maybe two years old, but Pulte's the one on the front line on this, on the necessary improvements, and they've baked in all the development activity in the area into their solution and into that agreement. So we support it, we're going, we're going to fund our part fully, and, and we agree with the priority.
I have one question, since we're talking about safety.
Yeah.
Let's talk about these 10-foot combined side yards for these 70, 100 square foot lots. There has been at least one other project, they were trying to do Charleston-style homes, and they were trying to do 10-foot, and it's not as safe. And so it was really putting us in the position of having to choose safety over the aesthetics they were going for. And I understand you lose maybe a couple lots, but it is, it is just safer to go up to 15 and not do that 10.
And I'm, I'm not a residential site designer, so I didn't have a hand in that, that designing the layout, but we certainly, we can look at that and discuss it with the, the buyers, you know?
I mean, I would, I would appreciate that consideration as we review it during the public hearing, to take that 10 to 15. I think that's an important safety consideration for our first responders that have difficulty on those 10-foot, if necessary. And it also reduces the spread of fires if they occur.
And I can't answer that sitting here tonight.
Got a question.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for this gentleman? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Barta.
Thank you.
Bring Ms. Porter back up, I believe. There's some questions for her. Mr. Singleton, I'll start with you.
Well, if you bring up the amenities, Matthew had up, which was before the...
I might need some, oh, I can do it. Okay, yes. Jeff, I got it to work. I'm happy to do that. There we go.
I'm going to ask some specific questions, because if you watch some of our recent public hearings, we're specifically asking about amenities, and enough of them in neighborhoods.
Sure.
Okay, and A, we're going to have a 2,000-square-foot pool, 500-square-foot kiddie pool, and a 2,000-square-foot heated clubhouse.
Correct.
And that is in A.
Right.
Okay. Because that's in there, and there's other space there, so it's just open space. How big is that area right there, do we know?
Which, which letter are you referring to?
A.
Oh, the size of A?
Yes.
Let me see if I've got that in here. I don't know as if I know the exact size of it, but I want to say it's probably two, two and a half acres, kind of best guess from using my eyeballs.
Okay.
But we, we've done preliminary layouts for all of those things, and they all fit nicely in there, the pool, the clubhouse, the, all, all the things that you just mentioned.
We can open space for kids to play. Okay.
Yeah.
On C and D, we have two mini parks. Can you tell me what those mini parks will consist of?
So mini parks will consist of, they could be like a little walking trail through it with a bench, maybe a picnic table. It's, it's just a spot for people to congregate. It's not going to be an overly programmed area with a lot of amenity. I mean, they're small, the mini parks, so it's just a, basically small congregation areas throughout the neighborhood. And I know we have, we have a couple of them through here.
Okay, B is a picnic gazebo and a dog park. How big an area will that be?
It's probably similarly sized to one of the adjacent lots, so 9,000 to 10,000 square feet is my best guess. But again, we've done a layout and a, a dog park and a picnic gazebo. I mean, 10,000, 9,000, 10,000 square feet is plenty of room for those two things. It's not going to be a gigantic dog park, like you see at some of the municipal parks, but it will be enough room for dogs to run around together.
Okay. Since we last met, we have been prioritizing open space for kids. If they want to go out there and play football, touch football, soccer, like whatever, and not a programmed space, but big enough they can play in, not the size of this room, which is not big enough they can play in. We're talking a lot of, a lot more space than that. And I need to see that in here. There's open space, but we got open space that's slivers, like the one up here above E, excuse me, I'm sorry, just to the left of C and D, there's a sliver. We had a project come in here a long ago that showed slivers, and we sent them slivering out of here because it was a courting plan project with no place for kids to play.
Right.
At all. And so we, I'm going to have to, and the council may not feel the same way, but so far, we've all felt the same way. It's some open space that's big enough, if kids want to go out there and play, they can play. And this is all based off of my office down the road here, 200 town, 200-unit townhomes, subdivision. We passed, I passed it, no place to play. There's an acre in front of my office that is another property that lets kids play on it, and that's where they get to play because the park is too far away. So we're going to talk about the, how many, I forgot how many units, something 100, 370, 270? I forgot how many.
170.
170.
170, I'm sorry, excuse me. 170, pardon me. But we need to have some space to play, and it doesn't need to be slivers. You can't play a ballgame with slivers laying 10 feet wide and 400 feet long. That doesn't work. So I would appreciate if you could get us the detailed plans that you have of these areas, so we can see the size of them.
Sure, and just to touch on that, so we, we've, we've designed them, but we've not fully designed them. So A, for example, that's the, the major amenity, the pool, the clubhouse, it's got all the things. We can look at shifting those things around to provide a large grassy multi-use playfield, ball field, whatever we want to call it, to make sure that there is enough space. And I, I agree, I have a son who's six, he loves to spend time outside, so I, I understand the need for that thing. In other municipalities, a lot of the neighborhoods I design, people, people don't want just like large grassy areas, they want things that are kind of programmed. So, but we can certainly take a look at that and make sure there's a large area that's grass. And even if we have to during site plan, shift some of the lots around to create that space, we, we can certainly take a look at that at that time. And we'd be happy to get you any, any plans as we're designing them, even if they're not completely final, just to give you all an idea of what we're planning for, for the programming of those open space areas.
In regards to open space, and our Garner Ford Plan that's coming forward, moving forward with us to adopt, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Trezenberg, we're pushing for large open spaces.
Sure, and I, I actually appreciate that, those are nice to have, for sure. Yes, we will definitely take a look at that and make sure that we are providing that as part of this development.
Exactly. Trezenberg, that's what's going to move forward, once we approve that, when that happens sometime.
Yes, yes. One of my staff members was just doing some rough sketching and calculations. So the main amenity area, that area A is about 135,000 square feet, so it's about three acres.
Ooh, I was pretty close. It's pretty good.
And the little, the smaller space up over here appears to be in the neighborhood of about just shy of 14,000 square feet.
Which one was that, second one, Jeff?
Up here by B.
The gazebo, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, I just wanted to express the desire for us to see those.
No, absolutely. We appreciate this feedback, because again, some of these areas have not been fully designed, but we want to, we want this input, so when we do get to that stage, we're incorporating all the stuff that you all find important, and mirroring the needs of the neighborhood, the needs of Garner, and bring it all together.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Bill, did you have anything for this? Okay, anybody else?
I'll just refer, you know, it is the old UDO, and so I would refer you and your consulting with staff to Section 6.12, where there's that 25 minimum percent of, of the gross area, common recreation and usable open space. And so that's where we're talking about this, the slivers that Mr. Singleton referenced, no longer counting those as towards usable open space. That sort of accompanies that PRD getting that added density is the trade-off.
Yeah, we understand, yeah.
So I'm in support of more open space as well.
Anybody else?
Yes. At the last public meeting we had, hearing we had, there was concern from the citizens pertaining to a particular blue line stream that was flooding over into Everwood.
Sure.
And just want to know, what is the status of that, or what transpired with that particular situation that was happening with Everwood?
I'm glad you brought that up. It's my magic trick for the night. Save your applause. So we, we had this discussion back two years ago about the stream. The stream is obviously problematic, but it's not a, a problem that we've created. It appears that the issue is there's a blue line stream that should have been a buffered stream that was not buffered and was built upon. So we had our, back in September 2021, we had one of our environmental consultants meet with some of the neighbors who were impacted by this stream. I'll, I'm going to switch back and forth, so you can see what lots we're talking about. So lots one through seven on this slide are the ones, the neighbors that are impacted by that stream. You can see the blue line goes right through those lots, and we'll get back to that slide in a second. So essentially, there's a, there's a, there's a stream there. It's off our property, it's off our site. There's nothing that we can do about a stream that's on the adjacent property. But we got confirmation from our environmental consultant that that should have been a buffered stream, and it was not, it was covered. So we, we took a step back and we kind of evaluated the, the pre and the post situation for our project, water flowing down through those lots, and what's there now with those existing lots as they are and where they drain now. So this is the pre-development drainage exhibit. This is what it looks like today. The existing drainage from those three areas that are on our Mallers development, it's about, it's 4.82 acres, just under five acres of water draining to that area. And the lots that are impacted, lots one through seven, the drainage is 2.43 acres. This is existing today. With the post-development grading, the way the lots are going to be graded is the lots are going to drain towards the road. So all the water that was, that's currently draining down to the south will now go to the north into the curb and gutter along the streets. So we've reduced our drainage area from just under five acres to just over an acre. It goes to 1.25 acres. The drainage for Everwood, it, unless the neighbors have made changes to their yard, and I'm not sure if they have, the drainage area is still the same. So there's a stream there, and we, we can't fix the fact there's a stream there. But we are reducing our drainage area significantly with part of this, and we're helping to lessen the issue by the way the drainage, moving it so it's going towards the north, towards the roads. But unfortunately, again, it, there's not a whole lot that we can do for a stream that was on a development where the stream is covered up and the houses are already built. It's an existing problem on an off-site parcel, or parcels in this case. But all, all we can do is take a look at what we can do on our side to help mitigate the problem as much as we can with our project. And I think that this, I mean, there's going to be some drainage. We can't completely eliminate it, but we're significantly reducing it by like 70%, I would say.
Explain to the property owners.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, it's been a while, but we had that meeting with the, the property owners that were able to attend. And we also had a Zoom call, too. So we had a Zoom call, and then the environmental consultant went out and met with them. And this, this was a while ago, but we've not had any development activity on our project because it's obviously not approved. So the situation has not changed between now and So the situation has not changed between now and then with regards to our pre-development drainage.
Okay, you good?
I have a question. On this, there was also the talk about the grading to the property lines, and then that obviously would eliminate the trees in that area. And there was some discussion, I'm having trouble remembering, about reconstituting some type of screening there.
Right, so the intention is to try to leave as many of the perimeter trees as we can. But unfortunately, that's not going to be possible in every situation. And this may be a situation where the trees have to get removed to do the grading to talk about the mitigation solution that's on the screen right now. As a result of that, we have a fairly robust replanting buffer that we call out. It's got very specific plants in it, a mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs and trees. So the intention of screening from the ground to a certain height with a variety of different plants that we're going to put in there. So we're not, I mean, obviously, the trees are big, they're existing, but new trees will grow, and we're going to plant enough to help it fill out quick and be robust to create that screen. The like-to-like lots, per the old UDO, don't actually require a buffer because the sizes are similar. We voluntarily put that 25 feet in there to create that buffer or to create that space to either have existing trees or a planted buffer for grading in it, which goes above and beyond. And that was a result of conversations we had with the neighbors long ago. They were concerned about, you know, the lots being, you know, right up against each other. Everwood's lots don't have a landscape buffer because it wasn't required because of their lot size. The 12,000 square foot lots technically don't need a buffer, per the UDO.
They do in the PRD, isn't that correct?
Generally, there's a 25-foot setback.
Not a buffer.
But yeah, there's an exception for the like-for-like, that there's no buffer that gets triggered, but.
Right, so we voluntarily added that 25 feet. And these are going to be the existing trees or a fairly substantial planted buffer if we have to grade it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Porter? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else from the developer at this point in time? Okay, hearing and seeing, well.
Water that Pam is talking about that'll be redirected from our site is our surface water. It's not the blue stream water. There is a blue stream that does go into the neighbor's property, and our environmental engineers actually gave a solution that they could put into place if they really wanted to fix that. They would all have to cooperate because it involves locating that blue line stream and directing it through a perforated pipe. And, you know, they can pull it off the property. So there's a way to deal with that issue, which is, again, as Pam said, not one we created. She's referring to our surface water. And that will all be redirected as part of our development and a requirement of our development. We have to treat our water on-site, so. Just want to make sure that was clear, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Porter. I believe that the developer has finished. We are, at this point in time, ready to hear from others who came desiring to speak at this public hearing. Ms. Gibson, do you have a number of persons who have signed up?
I actually have the sign and sheet.
I'm sorry.
So Elizabeth Morrison signed up to speak.
Okay.
And then another gentleman, may or may not. But indicated that he might, depending on what Ms. Morrison.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Elizabeth Morrison. I'm actually the HOA president for Everwood. The lot sizes is our main concern with the development that we're looking at right now. We had requested that we kind of get a like lot size, seeing that Everwood is at 12,000 at its minimum. We feel like the 7,500 is just not adequate. We do feel like that it would minimize our property value by putting in all this dense property right up front. As you're coming down Bryan Road, that's what you're going to see. And that's connected in the front to Everwood. So we would request that you all take a look at that and hopefully help us out some. We do have multiple developments on Bryan Road that's already in that situation. So we would prefer not to have this one come in that way. I think it is possible for them to redo their map so that they, first, like you said, I appreciate the fact that, you know, kids do need a place to play. And the more dense you have it, the more kids you have. So therefore, where are they going to go? You can solve that by not putting in as many units, having more yard space, and having a play area. So we do recommend that you all take a look at that. Setbacks is also a concern to us because with the setbacks, our properties are not deviating from any of the setbacks. That helps them with their density because alleviating those setbacks allows them to put in more homes. So if we minimize that, make them hold to the actual setbacks that are required, then their lot sizes will have to get larger. So that is a recommendation from us. We also have larger roadways and, or streets in Everwood. They're wide, and we keep it really, the traffic that comes through there is slow. Everybody knows there's good plan. They've now opened up an area into us that's going to bring on more traffic. We would appreciate there be some kind of a speed mitigation so that that throughway is not just hammered by all the people in the new subdivision. Whether that be by speed bump or whatever they can do, we would appreciate that as well. As far as the TIA, that was done in the summer when everybody was out on vacation, away from their homes. Like you said, the school was not in, it was not in session at that time. There has been several homes that are now built and people are in them since that was done. We didn't feel that it was actually done at a good time to start with, so the numbers were low. We feel like if it were redone, you would see a different number. And like you said, there is only two access, there is no other place to go. When you come out on the Bryan Road, you have one of two ways to go. And traffic is backed up constantly. I have a teenager just learning to drive. It's scary. So I appreciate that you all are trying to get that stoplight in before the development goes in because it is very important. So I thank you for your time, and hopefully you will consider what we are bringing forth.
Can I, well, assuming by your position that you're speaking in essence for some of the other folks who are here as the HOA president? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Was there someone else?
Other individuals, Marshall Garrett.
Welcome, sir. Ask you to keep your comments as concise as possible.
Marshall Garrett, we live at the corner, my wife and I live at the corner of Coffee Berry Court and Twinberry. And there are three homes here represented that will be affected by this throughput. I think Mr. Trezenberg, he referred to the throughput as being Twinberry. It's actually Coffee Berry Court that he referred to. The, it's hard for me to believe that you would actually put a pool, actually a play area, if you will, clubhouse and everything, right there next to Bryan Road. If anybody knows, Bryan is one of the lead roads coming into White Oak, going up to the large Amazon Distribution Center, and the traffic is tremendous. I cannot imagine any child that is adventuresome couldn't get out of that little clubhouse, park, pool, et cetera, play pool, and get out on Bryan Road. It's only two lane now. We really needed it to be three lanes some time ago. And speaking to Ms. Behringer's concern, you're right, turning there, it's very dangerous. And I know that right across the road from us, we have a four-year-old and a two-year-old, or is he five now? And then there's a newborn, and she's going to be, by the time this thing gets completed, she'll be about two or three. I would hate to see that the traffic coming through there on Coffee Berry, coming out of that new subdivision, rezoned, let's say, R, what was it, R4, R5? It's going to be a density problem that I think will, as Ms. Morrison just said, you need speed bumps or whatever to keep the traffic in check. And with teenagers, and with our law enforcement today, it's pretty tough to keep these teenagers in check. And in fact, most of us older people need to be kept in check also. Anyway, our position is, we do want it rezoned. We want to see the growth. We think it says Mahler's Creek should occur, and the rezoning should be equal to the Everwood subdivisions. This is me and my wife now. I'm not speaking for anybody else. That is, the detached single-family units per acre, no denser than the Everwood community. We welcome growth to improve schools, services, and businesses that will attract homeowners to provide a larger tax base without increasing tax rates to Garner residents. We think that this might be a good compromise that will protect Everwood property, the values, and it should be acceptable to all parties. The developer, represented by Burton Engineering, the town of Garner, the adjacent subdivisions, and the Everwood home owning community. Our reasoning is that the vastly large Amazon Distribution Center up on Jones Sausage will continue to increasingly and disproportionately impact our little nook here in Wake County. It is not unreasonable to argue, unless Bryan Road is properly widened to accommodate this, that all of these different developments south of us, be it along Bryan Road, Clifford Road, 1010, et cetera, will further encroach upon our lifestyle. We think it is incumbent upon you guys, honorable mayor and council members, to really consider this very carefully. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate that.
Oh, and I'm not trying to endorse the new Senate dress code in the US.
Well stated. Ms. Porter, do you have something else, obviously?
Yeah, can I have just a minute to address Ms. Morrison and Mr. Garrett's comments?
Yes.
Okay, so they both brought up density. When this project originally started, we had 270 units, which falls in line with the 2.5 to five units an acre, what the comp plan says. We heard that was too much, which is why we dropped it to 170. So technically, we're below that threshold of the comp plan, the two and a half to five units an acre. We're just below it. But the reason the comp plan calls for that density is because there's a need for housing. So we're trying to delicately balance the need for housing and providing that thing with also providing something that's in line with this area. That's why the way the neighborhood is designed, the lots that are larger are adjacent to the adjacent lots in Everwood that are big. That's why we've got the red lots next to the Everwood lots. We're cognizant of like-to-like development, but also there's a need to balance the need for density. Density at the front makes more sense than density in the back. The back is quieter, that's where the creek is. So we're trying to step the density back as we go back. You know, we can certainly evaluate during site plan, maybe doing a reduction. But this, we've already made a significant reduction very early on in the process. You know, the comp plan wants two and a half to five units an acre. That's a lot. That's like a townhome neighborhood, it's a very dense townhome neighborhood. That's not what we're doing. We're trying to kind of marry everything together, the needs of the town and what's in the community. At our meeting back in December, we did have a commitment to including traffic calming measures at the connections we're making to Everwood. I think Jeff maybe touched on that in his presentation, but I did want to just reiterate that, that that is our intention. Making those connections, we will do some sort of traffic calming measure, whether it's a speed hump or something else. And I know Jeff mentioned the one connection in front of that pinch point that we don't have to make. You know, the stub is there to make the connection. If there's a way for us not to have that extra pavement, we will evaluate that at site plan. But we may need it. Everwood has one entrance to their neighborhood. This provides opportunity for first responders to get through to both neighborhoods efficiently. And people that are in Everwood can go out Mahler's Creek if their entrance is blocked for whatever reason. It works both ways. It's not just for us, it's also for them to use as well. And let's see.
Are you almost finished? I want to give other people a chance to speak since I'm working with the public, but go ahead.
Sure, yeah, just one other quick thing. Mr. Garrett brought up the amenity, and I'm not sure if he was alluding to people driving to our neighborhood to use the amenity or not, but the amenity is for the neighborhood. It's not going to be open to the public to drive in and use and leave. People may choose to drive to the amenity, they may choose to walk, but it's not like an open invitation for anybody to just come and use it. It's intended for the community. So I want to just make sure that was noted on the record, that it's not just like a public park for everybody to use. And that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Was there someone else?
There's no one else that had signed in to speak.
Okay, so at this point, we've been going for a while. Is there someone else who came wanting to speak and maybe you failed to sign up? I'll recognize you this time so we can wrap up pretty soon. Okay, sir, come to the podium, please. That's your name and address.
Yep, James Hawkins. I'm at 140 Coffee Berry Court. Sorry for the informality, I was supposed to be at my son's baseball game tonight, so I apologize. One of the, I was in attendance at the meeting in 2021, and one of the concerns that was also brought up, I believe by the council members, were the softening of that curve in Bryan Road. That has not been addressed tonight, and I think it should also be taken into consideration, especially where the entrance of that new potential development is going to go. And then I also had a question, and I don't know if anyone has the answer, but is it code, is it new code to have multiple entrances into new neighborhoods in the town of Garner right now?
Yes, we've had that for some time.
Okay, I just, I haven't noticed multiple, when did that go into effect? I guess is my next follow-up question.
Many years ago.
Okay.
Yes.
It's 1993, if not before.
So I guess to that question, why was Everwood allowed to be developed with just one entrance point? If it was, because I believe Everwood was built in 2008, if I stay.
Because it did not exceed 75 houses, and that's the limit.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the clarification. Last statement is just the connections there in between, you know, Everwood and the potential new development. Don't really see the need to have two of those connection points at Twinberry and Coffee Berry. I think that's a bit, you know, overkill. But again, just my opinion.
A point, Mr. Hawkins, about the two entrances, Mr. Trezenberg wrote, 75 at Trips. I know that at one time, this was going to be phase two of Everwood. We approved phase one, I remember that. This would be phase two, economy crashed, all that. So that's why it shows the stubs, and it was going to be a similar, a similar type of neighborhood. This is what's proposed, but yes, the point about two entrances is because of public safety. If something happened more than. If something happened, more than one way out.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, you good?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? I think I want to close the public hearing. Okay.
Can we ask another couple of questions?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, the condition that talks about the traffic calming device is stated in here for y'all. There is a condition in the proposal, they have to put traffic calming in. I just want clarification from staff. It says, "Developer will install a traffic calming device," or devices, we're going to make it plural in case they need more than one, "at the two proposed connections on Capertree and Coffee Berry and Everwood subdivision that is acceptable to the town engineering department and other town agencies." So you're saying that it can go, it could maybe one on their street, but we're going in the Everwood subdivision that exists now, which is a public road, and put the traffic calming. That's the way I read it. It wouldn't be on their half. It could also go into there because, oh, up here on the map, I can't think, I can't remember the name all of a sudden. The one that's got such a straight shot, they could put multiple, more than one on there, two on there possibly. Am I correct, Ms. Harrison, or am I incorrect?
You are correct. Yeah, I think we have potential to do a combination of devices, whatever's going to work the best. That could be on the new development side, or it could be on the Everwood side as well, since those are our streets also, so.
I just know that in the existing Everwood, that, what's the name of that street? Is somebody, Frank?
So the more straight shot on the left is Twin Berry, the shorter is Coffee Berry.
Right, thank you. I get it confused. Because of the straight shot, I think that's some of the concern is, quickest point between A and B is the straight shot, so. But the condition would mean they could go into the existing Everwood on those streets and make some type of device or devices to track.
It could, yeah. As long as we choose devices that don't require any addition of ride-of-way, then they could certainly install within the existing neighborhood as well.
Clarify that condition. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've heard from the public. I'm ready to close the public hearing. Any reason not to at this point, counsel? We're ready? Okay, close the public hearing and ask counsel, what is your pleasure?
I have a comment, kind of to consolidate some concerns. I think there's an interesting comment about the need for housing, and I think the project is coming to Garner at a different time than two years ago. We actually don't need any more housing in Garner. We have 6,000 to 7,000 units in the pipeline. We'll be at 50,000 people by 2030. And adding additional housing, this type of housing, it's not going to do anything for the housing problem, which is workforce housing. I think the other issue that is coming to light, as we've done some analysis in our Garner Forward Plan and looking at the financial impact of housing, is we need to find the right density, because the main driver for our growing budget is people. And the people are what are causing the increase in the cost of the budget. And so somewhere, there's a balance between, and I've done an analysis of the difference between having three lots on an acre versus two lots on an acre. And actually, for the town, it ends up being better to only have two lots on an acre, because you're actually bringing fewer people to the town, even just a slightly higher home value, tax value. Actually, it's more net revenue for the town. So there's a little more analysis, and these small lots are problems, because you're packing those people in, and people are not the problem. I don't want to say that sitting up here, but they're the driver of the deficits that we're seeing on a fiscal basis. We're raising a lot of taxes because we're trying to keep up. So I think that the larger lots with more expensive homes is closer to what we need to get to, and I think Everwood sort of mirrors what we need. And Mr. Singleton mentioned there was supposed to be an Everwood Phase Two, which would have looked like Everwood Phase One. And so I think there's some financial analysis we also need to do. I think we need to move towards making, not just planning decisions as a council, but fiscal decisions as a council. So what is the fiscal impact of this project? That's just one. I think the deviations, I think part will take care of that, is getting rid of these 10-foot combined side setbacks, because it'll create the need for larger lots in the green space. I think we have a lot of issues to work through at this point, but I think we're making progress.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stellinger. Any other council members here to comment at this time?
Ms. Mayor, can I make a recommendation, take a quick break before any other?
Yeah, okay. You want a break before we vote? Yeah. All right, I don't have a problem with that. We've been at almost two hours, so counsel anything before we break. Okay, I'm going to declare about a 10-minute recess. It's 10 of 8, according to the clock on the wall, and suggest that we resume at 8 o'clock, or as close to that as possible. Okay?
Back to order, thank you for being here timely. So we've closed the public hearing, council, I'm gonna suggest we take a moment or two to see what observations, comments you care to make before we call for a vote, or if you have any, so I'll start to my right here with Ms. Perringer.
Well, we raised several questions, none that can't be a solution found for, but good work so far, and I think perhaps we need to give some direction to address these questions and then bring it back.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
One of the biggest issues is this signalization timeline, which we don't have, and this project is tied to that, Mr. Bartlett's got, as he noted, some $278,000 committed to that, but we don't have a timeline, and we're gonna have to amend the agreement, so we need to know what the agreement is much more firmly before we move forward, because that is the key, a key to this development. Couple other items that are mentioned as I discuss with Ms. Porter looking at these amenity areas and getting specifics, also when there was a neighborhood meeting, someone asked if these would be rental properties and these were to be for sale items, excuse me, not for sale items, for sale houses, sorry, not at a store. So I think a condition needs to be stated or added that no rental properties will be, the developer will not buy properties and rent properties, or some language like that, that it's not a developer who's gonna develop all the houses and rent the entire side of this, and that's not what we're, I don't think we're looking.
Mr. Singleton, ma'am? I have to caution you that you cannot make a decision based on whether it's rental or owner occupied under state law.
They can do it in their HOA covenants, correct?
They can have their own private agreements, yes.
Okay, all right, but, Mr., this proposable force is not with the developer, so how do we get that interjected into the HOA, which has to be approved by the town, correct?
They must have HOA covenants regarding the open space, but council can't make a decision based on whether it's rental or owner occupied under state law case decisions.
But the developer can offer that up in the HOA.
The developer may restrict, yes.
I'm not saying--
Like they may restrict the color of certain things that town council doesn't have the authority of.
Right, I'm not saying restrict rentals, I'm saying that the developer doesn't buy it up and rent them all out, that's, we've had proposals before us, and we voted some down, and the only one we approved was a rest, was a small one, that's what I'm saying.
And the developer could offer up a voluntary condition, could they not?
Yes, as long as it's voluntary.
Not a condition for us.
It's a voluntary condition from the developer, okay. I would just strongly encourage that, because I don't know what's in the HOA agreement forever would, but I think there might be language in their HOA that's similar to that in the HOA, okay, just wanna make sure that we're again being like Phase Two, and this is, what they put before us is similar to that, so that's my concern, is the biggest thing is we need to know what the timeline's gonna be for the signalization, and I know that if and when this project gets approved before COs issue, it'll be a year or two, but we wanna make sure that the light is staying on a, the signalization project is staying on a timeline, because as we've learned with our own transportation issues lately, those timelines are hard to stick by.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, anything?
In regards to that, for COs or whatever you're giving out, I know we've discussed this with some of the other developers too, was that, I think we alluded to that earlier with the proposal that came on earlier, was that it said, "We're not gonna sell any houses till that light and all, everything is operational and taken care of," in other words, they didn't wanna commit to the problem, but, you know, for us going ahead and putting their, putting it together and developing it, but nothing can be sold to that light as operational, all those road conditions are met, and I think that was pretty well put out with the previous group we had come in here talking to us, and traffic seems to be everybody's, what everybody's concerned about right now, and especially with Brian Road, so that's my only concern there is, because again, we got that timeline, it got, as Gray mentioned, where they pushed everything back, getting the state to approve everything on that intersection, that impacted everybody, this project and the previous projects ahead of us, so, but if that signalization is still the biggest concern with all of us, you know, the attorney can give us some guidance on it, but is that a condition that nothing is sold till that intersection is completed?
That is not the current condition, so the developer would have to agree to that, to that modification. The current condition has to do with the payments.
Right.
Okay.
I'll just offer that up for consideration.
Mr. Vance, go to you.
Yes, in reference to the statement that was made by Ms. Porter pertaining to evaluation of the site plan during, and doing a reduction in housing from its current proposed 170 down to lower, is that something that had come back before us for our review, the site plan itself? It would not. It would not, so how will we know if there's been a reduction or not?
I mean, outside of us giving you an update on that at some specified point that you would like one, it would be a, it would be a staff level approval because of the number of units.
Okay, so there's a possibility there will not be a reduction?
Right, if there's, I mean, if there's, the way things are worded now, the 170--
170.
Yeah, would be the max, and so any, it could not go any higher, but it could go lower.
Mr. Dellinger.
In agreement with my fellow council members on all the issues they brought forward, I think they also need to, we also need to look at that deviation, that 10 feet, so to Mr. Vance's point, a reduction would come in either disallowing the smallest lot size or reducing the number of those small lot sizes by increasing these side, allowing that deviation, but the safety issues are a concern, the light is a concern, and I think given, in light of the corner forward updates we're doing and doing these fiscal analysis, I think we need to look and model this out to see whether the larger lots are better for the fiscal sustainability of the town or these smaller lots, and I think we got a lot to do on and polish up.
Okay, go ahead.
Developer, what was the original number of lots to begin with? You've already reduced it once, I know. 270 when you started, so you've already reduced it by 100. I wanna make a point that it's already been greatly reduced from the original plan.
Okay, this has been a long time lingering out there.
Mr. Mayor, just, we do have some concerns here, and I think everything is workable in some way, fashion, or form, is there a way we could delay this vote for another meeting, give these guys time to work out what needs to be worked out, so all the questions would be answered, and maybe a little more workable? I'm just offering that up.
Yes.
We did close the public hearing, I'll make sure we--
Yes, you did close the public--
But make sure we did that, so we continue, we know, 'cause we carried the public hearing from 21 months.
If you recall, though, this is not a required public hearing, so you are able to pretty much take what action you wanna take, you can defer your decision tonight, or you could, could ask for it to come back to consider certain things.
Well, I mean, I would encourage council to--
I think it's, I think all of us have got some genuine questions, nothing probably can't be worked, worked through, if we just give it the time, if we could determine a date to bring it back and, and give the presenter time to deal with these issues to, it would be workable, and bring it back, is, whether it's a month from now, or whatever it is, whatever near state would be, would that be amenable to everybody, because our, our concerns could be handled, and then have a chance between now and then to work through those.
I think to Mr. Singleton's point, the timeline and cooperation of Pulte on that development agreement is the driving factor on when this can come back, so how we link that in a motion to when this comes back, I'm not sure, because I don't know how long that's gonna take.
Let me throw this out there, I move that we continue this discussion with the Muller Street PRD until the meeting after a signalization timeline and amended agreement has been agreed upon by the town council, and in the time between now and then, that detailed information be given on the amenities issue, also the issue that Mr. Dellinger brought up about the 15-foot side yards, and what that impact would have on the product, project, I'm sorry, not product, that's two big issues, and also the two connections on Coffee Berry and the other one, I'm sorry, we talked about whether you need both of them, I don't know, I know it's convenient, I do know one goes straight into a cul-de-sac, so I don't know if that is an issue that the council feels strongly about one way or the other, I do know that is noted by Ms. Harrison, that we need to make sure that traffic calming is done on the other road, maybe in multiple places to help, because of the straight shot out of there, if some people may take that to go south, so, I think that's at least three things to consider, I'm sure others may have something else they'd like to bring up.
So, Mr. Jones, that, that motion would be obviously to a time indefinite, but directed by the action of other items in the meantime, right?
Right, similar to what was done previously with this project.
Yeah, way back when.
This should not take, we hope it doesn't take 21 months, if that agreement on the timelines takes 21 months, we're all in trouble, if it takes more than two months, we're in trouble, so I'll put what I said in the form of a motion, and if someone wants to add anything to direct the developer to do to it, just please add it in there.
Could you make, make that motion one more time?
I didn't get it written down, I'm sorry.
I move that we continue this meeting, and it can, will come back after the amended timeline and agreement with Pulte and the town of Garner is agreed upon, which we hope will be within the next 30 to 60 days, in the meantime, we direct the developer to work on amenity information, 15-foot side yard information, what was the third one I said?
Road connections.
What, right? On the road connection between, if the two road connections need to be made, and any other conditions that the developer may want to add in particular about this not being a, encouraging the developer or of the product would not be a developer initiated rental project.
And I would add that they also present a version of this project without that product A, the 7200 square foot lots, to see what kind of reduction and impact that has on their project.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion has properly been made and seconded. Everybody understand what we're voting on? Okay. If you, if you favor the motion, which will bring us back, obviously at a future date, that we don't know what it is yet, if you favor the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, vote no, and I believe the motion carries unanimously. This matter is concluded here this evening, but there's work yet to be done, Mr. Bartlett and others, and hopefully, as has been mentioned, this thing can be brought back in a timely manner, so we can keep it moving. Anything else?
I'd just like to make a statement with regard to that stoplight and Pulte's position of not putting the stoplight in till the road improvements are done, there is a big difference in can't and don't want to. They, they can't, that doesn't always mean they can't, that may, may mean they just would prefer to do it differently, and I think we need to keep that in mind, that they can do what they wanna do.
Ms. Perringer, I would, I would just add that the road improvements at the intersection are required by DOT, they will not allow the light to be put in until those improvements are made, so, no statement about Pulte's willingness to do anything, I'm just selling, DOT has said that they can't, the, the road improvements are required for the light to be put in.
What exactly are those road improvements?
The extra lanes that are being added, so that the, so that the traffic can be carried through the intersection, so those requirements are what's being required by DOT.
So DOT has no plans to improve that intersection on their own?
DOT provide, is providing the funding for the stoplight through the spot mobility funding to add to this project.
I understand that, but that road is in terrible shape, period, whether anything ever gets built there or not, and that needs to be addressed.
All right, I think, unless anybody else has anything on that, I'm gonna move us to the next item under new and old business, thank you all for your time this evening, that was a long hearing, but we appreciate that. All right. So we will go now to item number three, under new and old business, I recognize Mr. Trezenberg, I believe, draft corner forward comprehensive plan, mapping edits.
Yes, sir, I apologize, I was still making notes.
Okay, good for you.
We had these attachments for you, all right, there we go. Yes, so since we talked last, we went back and looked at, again, just re-analyzing and seeing if there was anything that we wanted to add to this, to really the discussion or bring to your attention, again, we highlighted the report with new comments in blue, for the mapping edit number one, this existing, what was shown as a neighborhood activity center at 401 and Manor Ridge Drive, the parcels that are still there at that location are all owned by the church, and I have, we have been talking to them sporadically over the last few years about some possible ideas for expansion and related uses that they might have, so there was really nothing else of size in that area that could really accommodate a neighborhood activity center, so we did wanna go back and just take a look at that. So our recommendation would still be to shift one to the south and then also introduce one to the north, but again, if either of those are not palatable, you know, the, as I stated previously, you know, the comp plan, even though with neighborhood typology, would still support some non-residential development, it's just more of a question of how much, you know, how much and to what level do you want to try to encourage it, so again, no, no change in our proposal in terms of what we're recommending, but again--
Do you think we oughta take these as you present them, one at a time, or?
Well, there's only really three that we looked at.
You're right, yeah.
Let's go back to number two, because that's 401 crossing, and we had a pretty consistent perspective on council around, and the public did, around changing that, and so now, why is it still the same as it was the first time it came to us?
So, as staff, we're still sticking by our recommendation, it doesn't have to be followed, but by this first one, again, being moved to the south, our perspective was to try to introduce some, a neighborhood kind of center here, I don't think that the existing proposal that you have reviewed is necessarily, it wasn't a, it's not a huge amount of commercial space, so I don't know that even that would rise to the level of a neighborhood center, so again, it's just a matter of whether or not you all want to encourage a higher level of mixing the uses, which we have talked about as something that we have been interested in promoting, but if you're not comfortable with it at that location, we can just take that one off the table.
Was my understanding of the instructions of the last meeting, and that parcel intensity change as well has not changed, so the goal was to come back and incorporate the, I recommended changes into this.
So we're trying to come up with a list of final edits to send to Matt's team to make, so if this isn't one that you don't want, we'll just take it off, it's as simple as that, I think.
Let me hear from some other council members, I appreciate Mr. Dellinger's thoughts, but there are other members who are gonna vote on this eventually, so--
Number two, this is exactly what came to us before with that added, and we, our instruction was to remove it.
Okay, well then, that just needs to be part of the motion.
The remove number two needs to be part of the motion. I was under the assumption you would bring something for us to approve, and say, "These are the changes that you recommended."
Right.
Done, we'll walk through them, and then we'll vote on them, and we'll be done.
Gotcha.
So--
Slightly maybe misunderstanding then on our part-- Slightly maybe misunderstanding then on our part was to go back and see if we wanted to propose any changes based on comments from a, our perspective as to what we would recommend, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading...
I'm gonna make notes now.
Well, okay.
That's okay.
Mr. Dellinger, I'm reading the, the sub comments here. Continuation of the review of mapping edits proposed by project staff and then doors refined by planning commission for the draft corner forward comprehensive plan, factors considered, et cetera, et cetera. But I mean, to me, that's, that's consistent, I guess, with what planning's trying to do with the idea that, you know, you'll either prove it or not...
Okay, let's, I, I thought we would see revised maps, so I'll have to make notes then, okay.
Gotcha, yep. Then here on number three, I know we talked about Woodland and Old Stage, so we did go back and again, look at the parcel kind of availability. And again, most of the availability seemed to be between Woodland and kind of in the Academy Street, which for the most part, I think is an, an open road, it's just a paper road at this point.
It is actually a road, but there's not, not much of a road. It's not an improved road, obviously, is it?
Yeah, and so I think there is another one, just, yeah, so Academy is, is to the south, and then there's a paper one, I think, between Woodland and Academy, you're right. So, you know, again, we're just kind of, again, looking at that whole area, and they're not really being something of that magnitude, and we do have the town home project going in next door. So again, it's just a matter of how much you feel you want to encourage in terms of creating a neighborhood activity center. We still felt like that would still be our recommendation going forward, and planning commission again, supported all of these as well. So, but there's nothing to say that these have to be part of the final directive.
What is Rollman Farms?
Rollman Farms is right here.
That, the, that's the town homes on the sta, Old Stage? That's where it started, that was called, final name?
Yeah, that's the final name.
Okay, I just didn't recognize it, okay.
And to change.
I'm, I'm sort of a Mr. Singleton's comments on this one before, there's not, I mean, Old Stage is a difficult road to add more traffic and commercial traffic to, with no signalization other than Woodland and no widening gonna happen. That's kind of a tough cell to add traffic to the...
This, this one is definitely a, a much longer range kind of horizon, and I don't know that we would have looked at it the same way had we not had more recent discussions in the last year or so, 'cause we were always under the impression that DOT was gonna push to keep Old Stage a three-lane road. They've now, and we were kind of advocating for it as a, a less intense alternative to four oh one, because it, it winds, it's the Old Stage Trail. They're now really pushing to make that a five-lane facility. That's not gonna, you know, happen tomorrow, for sure. So, you know, again, comprehensive plans, you can look as far forward as you want to. This one admittedly, we were taking a, a much longer, I think, range look.
Like, the plan would be revised in five years anyway, so that makes sense to look too far out, 'cause the two conditions will change. Don't have it on here now, and it gets accelerated, you could do it then, but...
But you want it to be aspirational, to a degree. But yeah, we, we can go, we can ultimately go either way. We don't feel tied super strongly to too many of these, so... We looked at, Mr. Dellinger, we had talked about the, the one at White Oak here, and so I went back and we, we, we reread the, the descriptions of, of the transit centers, and the transit centers specifically had language about BRT and commuter rail. Couple different approaches we could take with that. One, we could either modify, try to modify that description, although I think our hesitancy with that is, is then maybe that opens it up too much. The other thing that we noticed is that the, from a graphical standpoint, the neighborhood activity centers and the community activity centers are scaled the same, but they're two different levels of intensity and size and the way they're described. So one of the things that we could ask them to do is to make the community activity centers graphically somewhere between the yellow neighborhood activity centers and the red regional activity centers, just to give it an idea that it's a little more impactful and addresses maybe a slightly larger area. So it's either change the text or potentially change the graphical representation, because it seemed like the community activity center description was still appropriate. It may just be that the way it's presented in the maps is not as impactful as it should be. Didn't know if you all had any comments on that.
The red is regional, and the grayish brown are the community and then the neighborhood. I mean, I guess it's still wanting that quarter to develop in a commercial way, because it will have the bandwidth. Four-lane divided facility at some point, I mean, extending through.
Right.
And wanting to encourage the sort of commercially destination, walkable centers, but also by transit, and I don't know that that's captured in the community. It doesn't, I don't know, it, it's in between somewhere, but I, I can understand. I did wanna go back to number five.
Sure.
Which was, I believe, the Burnett Farms, is that correct? The, up in the, no, wait, maybe it's not five. That's not that one, but it has to, is Burnett Farms on here as a change?
Number six.
There.
Sorry.
Number six, that's my fault.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, why are we not going for a higher intensity again, off of five forty?
Right, so we, we kept the, the two on either side of five forty, again, just trying to attract a different type of commercial, non-residential experience. We could, if y'all were interested, I mean, we could just simply move this one over and have it...
The two vacant tracks of land on either side of that. One was, on the north side was developed into townhomes or, or something with some promise of commercial coming in the future.
Right.
But we want that intensity of that commercial, I mean, we're kind of stuck now, 'cause we've got townhomes, but then we're butting against five forty, which is a good place for other people to come in from other parts and dump money into Garner and provide jobs or whatever. I just want us to have that, I'd rather us, you talk about aspirational, go high, and if something then comes in smaller, we have to make a conscious decision that we want to go smaller. So, the aspiration is to have a, maybe not fit in scale, 'cause that's sixty acres or whatever, but it was something more intense and especially right off of an interstate on both sides, because those are both vacant and accessible.
Yeah, so we, we would have this one here, this is Auburn Nightdale Road, and this is five forty, so there is one there covering that larger acreage. And then it, you're right, that we have about ten acres left over here, so I think that kind of weighed into our, hey, may, we wanted to add something so as not to forget about that ten acres, but...
Read the map wrong? I thought the other road was five forty.
Oh, okay.
So it is on both sides, you're right.
Yes, we do have it on both sides of five forty.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay.
When I looked at it, I figured I should probably blow it up.
I guess I had a question about the corner, well, let's not refer to it by the project, but the tracks of land north of the rec, the senior center and between Jürgen Road and Crete Road. Probably needs to get some type of designation as a neighborhood or community activity center. We don't want to operate under the presumption that whatever is here is what is gonna happen if it falls through, what is gonna be our aspiration then? So, I think adding a community level there that has more commercial makes sense, again, looking forward and not being presumptive.
Yeah, this...
It's the largest track of land in the north part of Gar, it's one of the largest assemblages left in the part of Garner.
We could, we could certainly add that one if everybody feels like that is, you know, we want to be, step up the game a little bit there. This, this existing graphic here at kind of the heart of downtown does just kind of nip the corner, but we've done that in a couple other places where we've had to kind of in more close proximity, so, yeah, we could certainly add that if...
Okay.
Just to summarize, I guess I'm thinking that there's probably two going away and one being added.
Yeah, I trust what you're saying, I think that's what I heard, council, anybody else? I hope the rest of you concur with, with that, if...
I think anybody made any comments on Gold Stage, Woodland?
I already made my comments on it. It didn't work at the other end with Timber Drive, I was...
Yeah.
I just would think that if there was gonna be development, and it's that close to four oh one, they'd put it on four oh one. Has more traffic opportunities.
And then I was just curious, did you find these helpful, putting these together so you could kind of see the two interacting with each other?
I, I would say yes, for, for me, as much as I, as much as I can understand them.
The big picture happens.
Yeah.
Little circle from the map.
Well, you know, I, I initially looked at trying to make one, but there was just too much color going on with trying to make one a little more transparent and let the one below shine through, so I settled on the, the outlines. That's something that we can, when we get to the final product, if you do find it helpful, we as staff can continue to maintain these graphics, if it's of help.
Not making light of that, but I was about to get those circles confused with the, the Olympic insignia, I believe, or not the insignia, but, no, but, yeah.
Yes, this would be the last part of the editing package to send to Mr. Newcaster's team with the other edits to the, the text part, would be these, these map edits, that we can get you a final, final.
Just wanna make sure all council concurs with the changes, hopefully this will be the last edit. I know Mr. Dellinger had a number of things that he talked about, so we're gonna make those and...
Bring it back.
The council's okay with the, as a whole, things that have been mentioned, is, okay.
What say you, council? Thumbs up?
All right, thank you.
We will, we will strike number two and strike number... We'll strike number two and number three and add a, add a center at East Garner Road, near the park.
Community center, yep.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate all your time and attention to this, and we'll get these back to Matt so he can have his team get working on these and get a, hopefully a doc, talk about, potentially approving.
Yeah. Something we can, we can agree on, for sure. So, thank you, Jeff. I'm down to item number four, and of course, I have a note that we were gonna go back to item five on consent at the conclusion of this portion of the agenda. So, Town Hall Annex Project and Budget Update, okay.
Evening, I'm Lisa Rodriguez, Senior Engineering Project Manager. I will present the project update piece of this presentation, and then we have Sarah Warren, the Budget Manager, and David Beck, the Finance Director, to present the financial piece and budget impact.
Okay.
So, the Town Hall Annex Project, just a quick overview, this includes renovating the one oh nine Forest Hills building to house staff of IT, communications, and the engineering department in the new IT server room. So they outgrew their current space, IT is the critical need, they outgrew the space within the police building, and also the server room doesn't have the infrastructure to keep it going, and we had some systems failed. This project also includes what you see, the red mark, the access road to provide direct drive and pedestrian connection to the new building. This shows the previous design, and it's nicely color-coordinated where the green is the IT side, orange is communications, yellow is common space, public area, and the lighter green is engineering, and gray was preserved for record storage. After revisiting this design and also future five-year plan of IT and engineering, we decided to expand the scope. The current design you see here, so the previous design will, would have housed twenty-eight staffs. This new design houses thirty-seven, so it fully builds out what, that corner that used to be preserved for record storage, there's been space found for record storage, so this fully builds out, so engineering can grow into a turn, twenty-two-person department. IT, I believe, has eleven to twelve, and then communications would have like three offices. This new design also shows two additional restrooms, two additional conference rooms, and includes additional exterior site improvements, and the budget became the three-point-four four million dollars that was proposed for the CIP FY twenty-four to twenty-eight budget book. So the current design you see in the new budget, so since the budget book to now, there has been more field discoveries and utility needs and also just further design, like, we learn to size the generator to the appropriate size, and also create like an emergency operations center to serve the server room and any emergency operations. We need an increased generator and the infrastructure to support that. So this new budget, the five million, includes the expanded scope you seen on the past slide, also escalation, 'cause the engineer's estimate we had previously was done December twenty-twenty-one. So this summer, we received the new engineer's estimate, and escalation played a big part on the increase in cost. It also includes the generator and infrastructure to support that, to support the IT server room. Also helps bring the building up to current code compliance and town standards, so additional site improvements needed, and also like meeting energy codes and also ADA compliance. It also meets adding utility needs, so to add fiber and conduit to bring town fiber to the new building, we, we need, we needed to add that. And then some field discoveries. We learned like the water line wasn't sufficient for the space, especially with the increased need of restrooms, so increased staff, we need additional restrooms, and then also we, we need to upgrade the water line. And other discoveries like the HVAC, the current HVAC setup is more of a small commercial setup where our space would need larger commercials, so we could continue with what's in place, but we could run into issues down the line, heating, cooling in the building, and also just more units to maintain. So, this number you see has a higher cost upfront, but a longer-term cost benefit. And this new number is one-point-six-one million above the FY twenty-four budget request and four-point-one million above the original project estimate. The town staff tried to do our due diligence and provide some value engineering options, which you see on the screen. Each of them do come with their pros and cons. So one of the options, we were trying to not... So one of the options, we were trying to not to chop up the, um, improvements within the building and think about site work. So one of the options would be remove the access road and that has a net savings of $200,000. It's a net savings because we'll still need to provide some kind of pedestrian connection. So this pedestrian connection is needed for the public to, um, go to the new space since it will house engineering, which will have a front counter. And the public does come over with questions, also to provide a, the direct path for town staff that goes back and forth daily, including the IT techs who wheel equipment over to provide support to Town Hall. So the pro for that one is we get a savings if we remove that site work. Another pro is there is thoughts, what would the future campus look like? Does this access road fall into our future campus planning? So there still is a need for space and future planning. We just don't know what that looks like. Um, a con of removing this access road is we still have to provide some kind of direct access, at least pedestrian level, and that will require rework and redesign to do so. So it increases the, the project timeline. Um, then we have reducing the size of the generator, which provides a small amount of savings. So right now the generator is sized to provide emergency power to the whole building. We can look at only providing it to half the building and that's the IT side, the more critical side. But that will come with additional design time and need an electrician to do some exercises to chase the panels and understand which, which panel is serving which side. Um, this was a two-tenant building, but we found some cross connection already. Um, then we thought we could phase the furnishings, um, we'll save $70,000 upfront. But there still need to be, um, that bucket of money. So as staff, um, open positions or vacant positions as we grow are filled, the furnishings will need to be provided. Um, the con for this one is sometimes, sometimes a product could go, um, out of the market. So we might have mixed match furniture. Um, so we run that risk there. retrofit only the IT side. You'll see that as the last, um, this one will bring us within budget, but it will have the most negative impact to a lot of departments. So it addresses the critical need of IT who outgrew their space and needs a, uh, more sufficient server room. And it will immediately displace engineering staff that's there currently. We have four, um, people who are there and that's our engineering inspections department. So this one hinders them and also hinders growth within Town Hall. So the plan is when engineering moves to this building, the development services on the first floor can grow into that space. Um, so that's the planning department and inspections department. And of course, others can grow into that space as well. We have a few project approaches we can take. The full build brings us, um, just above 5 million, needing, um, the 1.6 million in additional funding. We could do the full build with the value engineering reductions and that'll help us save, um, a little under $500,000. We could build the IT side only. That would bring us within budget, but have the most negative impacts throughout various departments. Staff recommends the full build approach. We think this is the best approach because even though it's the most costly right now, it has the best long-term benefit. We won't have to displace staff to do any improvements. Um, and then we'll secure the costs now where like if we wait to renovate half the building later, we could see that come at a higher unit cost, where if we do it all at once, we're at a lower unit cost. And now as opposed to later where we'll have escalation. Then I think we go.
So we know that doing anything does not come without cost. So, um, let's just talk about some of the financial and cost implications with, um, where we are landing with the Annex Building. If you recall, um, in order to renovate the Annex, the town undertook six, just over $6 million in installment financing for the renovation. Plus, uh, there, the remainder of that installment financing was to be reimbursed to our general fund, which would, uh, offset costs that we utilized to acquire that position or that building. Um, in addition to the bank building, uh, which is at that north corner of Aversboro and Fifth Avenue, uh, as well as the Public Works land purchase. So the original plan was 2 million towards the renovation and then returning just over $4 million to fund balance. As Lisa mentioned, of the FY 24, 28 CIP, the project estimates were updated based upon the new design work and the project budget went from 2 million to 3.4 million. And what that did was just further reduce how much money we were going to send to fund balance. So we were going to send just over 4 million. Now we're looking at 2.6 million that we're going to be sending back to fund balance. Uh, based upon the information that Lisa provided today, uh, you saw the current estimates are just over $5 million. And therefore, we will only be able to reduce, uh, we will only be able to reimburse fund balance by just under a million dollars. So those are the trade-offs. Uh, we also want to highlight some of the, um, overall, um, highlights of our fund balance. So our town's budget has grown 15% on average for the past three years. I know a number of you, um, noted that during the budget deliberation. As the town's budget grows, um, and we're not contributing to fund balance, we start inching towards that 30% policy that we have, 30% of unassigned fund balance. As of the end of fiscal year '22, that fund balance was 30.8%, so inching really close. I know that David's team is still working on the FY 23 numbers. We don't have those available yet. But it is likely going to be close as well. And what this means is that it just gives us limited capacity for additional capital project increases, uh, moving forward. ARP dollars really helped us, uh, with a temporary boost to that fund balance. But as you are all aware, we're starting to spend down that money. And just as a reminder, the, in, in doing the full build approach, uh, rather than reimbursing the fund balanced, um, by 4 million, we'll be redo, reimbursing it by just under a million. We also have to consider some of the future needs and funding needs that we've got. Uh, as part of the budget process, we presented to you that all of the 2021 bonds have been fully allocated to projects. Uh, we also know that based upon numbers that were presented in the FY 23 adopted budget and the FY 24 adopted budget, that capital projects, their budgets have increased by about 35%. This does not include Joan sausage. And, and these have increased for a variety of reasons and, and we presented a lot of that information, uh, to you in the spring when we discussed the capital plan. Uh, based upon where projects are in, uh, current design and what we're experiencing with, uh, the market, we anticipate, based upon current project plans, there will be additional cost increases. And we also know that our debt model shows limited capacity for additional debt moving forward. Uh, Lisa did mention this. We also have to consider our future space needs. Um, the Annex property, uh, addresses immediate needs for IT and also growth needs as well for IT and development services. Um, but based upon our multi-year model, we're adding eight to 10 positions annually, where that's what we're projecting. Um, at the current moment, Town Hall doesn't have sufficient space to accommodate that growth. So when we look towards FY 25, 29 CIP development, we will need to consider the growth needs at Town Hall, specifically, uh, for our administrative departments such as HR, budget, uh, town manager, town attorney, um, as well as our finance department. We also are looking at our parks administration. So our park staff is scattered across the town in different facilities. And we think it is really important to, uh, bring them into one location, um, for efficiencies as well. So these are just some things that we'll be talking about as we move into next year's budget development and CIP development.
The last slide that has the next steps. We're hoping council affirms staff their direction to go for the full build approach, which has the total cost you see on the screen and the additional funding needs. Um, if we get that direction, we get to tell the design team they can progress the plans to construction drawings. And then we hope to bid early next year and then bring that, um, bid price to the LGC for the installment financing request in March or April.
Okay. Go find us some money. Council questions for either one of these two presenters here, Ms. Behringer, anything?
It's costly, but, uh, it's something we got to have. We're growing, so obviously. And, uh, the, uh, so IT moves over there where they're at now, the police station, that'll revert back over to the police department. I'm assuming where they're at now.
Yes, that's the plan. That, when IT frees up the space in the police building.
I'll take that back.
It would revert back over to police and yes, they have.
And.
They can use it.
This is going to have a, a larger area for storage or storage records. Did I understand that correctly?
The previous design did. It left a corner, um, space, but then that would limit engineering's growth because we would be tapped out to growth. We'll probably only have like two to three cubicles for inspections. So the new design is now building out the, um, space completely. So engineering can grow, uh, or anyone can occupy that corner space until engineering grows. So, yeah, it's no longer going to have record storage there.
And thirdly, the, uh, bank building, what are we going to wind up doing with that?
Carolyn, tell your friend.
Money.
So, uh, this is, um, when we talk about the growth and space needs, um, we, we are really considering, um, what properties we currently have and what that looks like. Um, and so I, I'm hoping that we can include as part of the CIP some planning efforts, um, to utilize that space, um, in the near future.
The old Annex Building will be for?
The old police Annex Building? Oh, that will be demolished. It's not in any condition to be occupied.
Okay.
We, we haven't done that for specific reasons, but, um, but, yeah, eventually it would be demolished.
So, thank you.
Um, go ahead.
You're looking to, to, to the project to go out and to bid in January. In actuality, as prices are changing and this is changing, when this is all said and done, we might not have any money put in fund balance. When all said and done, let's be honest. Okay, just.
That is possible, yes.
Just want to make sure we all understand that. There's a good chance as, uh, prices increase, that, that could happen. I have no problem with the full build approach. There's no need to do a half a generator and a halfway do something. If we can do it, just do it. It's expensive. Uh, you know, if we'd have done it the original plan, then, you know, it might've been done less expensive than if you had to go back and redo it. And you may have spent the money anyway, but I just think we all need to realize that there may or may not be any money left to add to fund balance due to the increase of this project. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to get to the council in just a minute. Just a couple of quick questions. At what point do we jump, drop below some red line there where this, uh, uh, our finances impact our credit rating?
I don't think that it would impact our credit rating. Typically, if we have a policy, um, if we dip below or fall outside the range of that policy, there's sort of a grace period. They want to see that you are, you know, you have a plan to get back within policy. So I don't think we would see an immediate impact if we sort of explain, you know, we have some one-time capital needs that we were funding with fund balance and, you know, we plan to replenish that in the future.
Okay. Ms. Behringer. Okay, uh, Mr. Dellinger.
First comment is for the town manager. Slides need to be in our agenda packet. I've made this point multiple times. Whatever timing we need to do to get this information, this is. This is better information than was in our packet. It was presented clearer, more clearly. And we need that all in one place. So whatever we need to do on the timing of getting the slides done to make sure it's in there, this is much more concise than what was in the agenda packet. Um, the numbers that are presented, I think. This full build out, build out approach, that is going to be financed, right? And what is the, what's not in here are the terms of that financing and the real cost increase from before. So when the initial proposal came in, it was going to be debt financed and there's a debt service and interest. So there's a even more gap here than is being presented. So I'd like to see like what the financing terms or options are, just to know what they are. Because in interest terms, this becomes a $10 million project, not $5 million project. So there's the, there's that issue. That's not a, I mean, if we can get that information to be helpful, just to know what the true cost will be of financing this project. The other is, and I think we're getting there slowly but surely, but when we're talking about making these CIP decisions, we're taken from somewhere else to do this. And it's going to be helpful to know what is that list of things and what is, what are we going to have to kick to the back of the line by making this decision? And again, with the bonds, that's a $69 million bond. It's a $100 million payback. This is very similar and probably even worse with the interest rates that are out there now. So I'm hoping we can get some more comprehensive, um, uh, presentation of the CIP, of the projects that are out there, so we can make conscious decisions of, okay, we're going to cut back on this park thing over here. As opposed to in two months, something comes forward and be like, oh, well, we decided to, you know, spend that other money on the Town Hall. Because everything that comes before us is the priority for that night. But strategically, we kind of want to be able to say, well, we need to slow this down or speed this up. You know, because we get put in a position where we don't really have an alternative or an option other than to find cash somewhere or something. And, um, so I'm just, the connection between the development decisions we make need to be directly tied to the financial consequences. And I think that's what we're experiencing now is a consequence of not incorporating the development decisions with the financial impact. And so as presentations could come before us like tonight, are they going to help the town? Or are they going to put us further in the hole? So we're not on the right side of this financial pinch, but, um, we're moving in the right direction. Uh, I feel good about the, the direction the finances are going and the approach. Um, but we've still got some other things that would be helpful to make the big picture decisions, so. All I got for now. Thank you.
Mr. Vance, anything?
No questions.
Just one more question.
Okay.
The financing tool we're going to look at to do this, are we looking at a five-year term, eight-year term, 10, 12, or do we know? And it, and will it be something that could be, uh, renegotiated or updated if interest rates do fall? Would it be a, a term where you could refinance?
Off the top of my head, I believe the, so, so the, you know, the $6 million borrowing has been in Davenport's debt model. And they're typically, you know, very conservative with their interest rate. So like we saw with the bonds, they felt like, you know, what they were projecting in the, the model was still within where we would fall when we actually sold those bonds, and we did. Um, so the debt model probably is, is still, you know, accurate based on, you know, their assumptions. I believe it's based on a 10-year term. It's either 10 or 15. Off the top of my head, I think it's a 10-year term. But we could certainly, you know, when we go to, um, to put out the RFP for bids for the financing, we could put something in there that allows for that to be renegotiated or refinanced at a, at a later date. And there, there are provisions for that. I mean, that's not. are provisions for that. I mean, that's not, that's not uncommon. So we can certainly look for that as an option.
Just wanted to make sure that was there because we've done that in the past. And, you know, when rates are dropping, they're the opposite of what it is today. So I just wanted to make sure that was an opportunity that may benefit the town in future years.
David, I don't think we've covered this, David. If you did, forgive me. Is the, is the bank building going to require significant renovations to put it to use? And I assume that depends on how we're going to use it or who's going to go there or what's going to go there.
So Mayor, I can weigh in on that question. So the quick answer is yes. Because of its previous use as a bank, whatever week goes there, there's going to have to be some significant renovations. But to Ms. Warren's point, there's also an opportunity to think about terms of the entire town hall campus and how does that parcel fit into what the future campus looks like, that vision for the future. So whether it's a renovation of that existing building or some other vision for that property, that's something we're going to have to work on and do some planning in the upcoming fiscal years in order to understand the direction we need to go to meet our staffing and space needs.
Yet to be determined how we're going to.
Yes.
Two questions. One, have we looked at the market for leasing space in this area that makes sense for the staffing clustering we need to do? Have we looked at the market to see availability of a certain amount of square footage?
I'm not aware of that unless, unless one of the managers has.
We have not. We have not.
I don't necessarily expect that it's going to come, I mean, cheap this area just because of where we are, but I just didn't know if we've done that. Other question is to sort of, as alluded to, we're three months into fiscal year and a budget and all, this is already coming at us. We got another rest of the budget year. What, what's looming other than the obvious one that was mentioned? Is there anything that is drawing your attention as to needing, it's out of whack with the budget we just adopted?
No, I think, I think the budget is still, is still a good, you know, plan for, for what we thought was going to happen. I think, you know, Sarah mentioned it and you mentioned it earlier, kind of the whole capital program, kind of looking at that holistically going forward instead of individual projects and silos and, and understanding what those impacts are when you make certain decisions. So I think the, the, the trade-off with this is potentially there may be some type of opportunity that comes along that we can't take advantage of. I mean, we've had money in our coffers to purchase land for park development and things like that that have come along in recent years. Maybe those opportunities, if they come along and are presented, it's not the right timing for us to do that. But I think budget-wise, operationally, we're, we're still in good shape.
Thank you.
Also want to add, I mean, our, our operating budget is in really good shape. And in reality, our capital program is in good shape. I think what we're experiencing and what we're going to continue to see and bring to you is not unique to the town. Communities all over the area are seeing cost increases associated with capital projects and that's just where we are in the market. And so with that, are just going to, there's going to come choices and trade-offs as we brought, we brought to you here. And what I will say is, you know, we've, we're working on a comprehensive list of projects, but you will note there are budget, Horizon items in your budget book in the CIP section. And those are, those are things that we are aware of and we will continue to add to that list as we become aware of other needs out there.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just have a moment, I just want to thank Lisa and David and Sarah for all the work on this project. You know, it's, it's always tough to, to do these projects and see the escalation in costs, but also be forward-thinking about not only what we need today, but what is the investment we should be making today for the future as well. And so I appreciate all the time and energy that Lisa has put in on the project management side, all the time and energy that Sarah and David have put on the financial side and the budget piece of it. But what you see tonight, you'll be seeing again moving forward. This is going to be our framework for bringing forward these CIP projects as we give updates to council. We really want you to understand sort of where we are with the projects, but more importantly, when project costs do go up, there are trade-offs. And so we're going to bring recommendations to you as a staff, as opportunities, like we did tonight, about ways we could cut the budget potentially. We'll have a recommendation from staff, what we think is the appropriate course of action. And, and we'll help council sort of understand when a decision is made, what are the trade-offs. So for example, Mr. Dellinger, you mentioned, what, what does this mean we can't do? Well, these dollars that we had set aside, we had hoped to be able to replenish some fund balance, but also use about a million dollars of it to purchase land for the new Public Works complex. Looking at the way budgets are going now, but we're not going to be able to do that. So, you know, if we're going to move forward with a Public Works complex, we're going to have to come up with some additional dollars for the property purchase in addition to construction cost and design cost. So as a staff, we're really working hard in order to bring this information to council. So you get not only the detailed picture of the project itself, but the bigger picture of how this impacts the CIP. And in addition to that, what, you know, what additional operating costs can we expect based on a lot of these CIP projects moving forward?
Anticipated timeline, once this stays on the schedule, how long will this renovation take?
And one decision point that we're having to start make earlier, and we just saw at Public Works, is the lead time for getting specialized equipment. And so the generator, like at Public Works, took what, over 12 months, 12 to 18 months?
It was about 15 months. So we ordered it in spring of 2022. It was just delivered and installed last month.
So with this building, if, if it's council's desire to move forward, we need to go ahead and order that generator now so it'll be ready by the time we need it. So that is one decision point. Once you decide that it's okay for us to go forward with this project, that we will need to go ahead and order that generator.
Do we need a motion or do we need the thumbs up or do we need a high five or what?
So it'd be helpful just to get consensus that, that council supports moving forward with a full build approach at little over $5 million.
I moved.
Suck it. Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, if you favor the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
You oppose, no. That to me affirms the council's support for.
Call the generator company tomorrow and get that all replaced.
Guy's on speed dial.
And it won't be a Honda, 2,000.
And then we need to speak to the next item.
Yeah, we're now.
Was it approved along with this?
Has to be taken as an individual item.
Sorry.
The item from the consent agenda needs to be voted on as an individual item.
And I think you've got some explanation on that and what some of the extra design costs are for some of the site amenities, the dumpster enclosure, generator enclosure and some of those things. I guess Lisa could speak to any questions you might have about that.
Any questions? I just wanted the discussion about the full build to proceed approving the amendment. So I don't have any questions about the amendment now that we've made a decision on what we're doing. So.
Okay. We still need to.
Still need to approve that item.
Yeah.
In a separate vote since it was.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right. No questions, all in favor of the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous. I believe that's all. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. We appreciate it. All right. I believe we are now down to committee reports. Are there any?
Just a quick update to let it, let the council know that the HR committee will be, will be meeting tomorrow to review applicants for the various vacancies on the various boards and commissions.
Thank you.
I got one update, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
On the Veterans Committee. We met last Tuesday and thanks to HR, we've got some good worker bees on the Veterans Committee. And Mr. Tim Stevens was an excellent add-on, by the way. And the committee is already working on Veterans Day coming up in October. We're also looking, reaching out now, looking on Memorial Day of next year. And so working on that also, we found out that the flags out at the Veterans Memorial, they were tattered and what have you. So reached out to Mr. Forrest Jones first thing Monday morning and by the afternoon, all the flags have been replaced. So accolades to those guys for getting right on it. So, but we do have a good Veterans Committee and we're watching a lot of other things. We've got some other things we're going to be looking at. So, but we do have an excellent team over there and they're all devoted. And that's all I had on that one.
Just a quick question. Is there still room or opportunities, I guess, for citizens to add to that committee, the, the brick purchases?
We're at full strength right now.
Well, you may have misunderstood my question. Is there still any money to be given by citizens who, who would still like, you know, you did the, the bricks with the names?
The bricks. We had discussed that. That's a good question. And the game plan is just to leave the prices as they are and no increase.
Okay.
Did I answer a question, sir?
Well, sort of.
Someone has some money to give as a gift.
We will take it, yes.
Matthew says his pockets are open.
My pockets are open.
It's not necessarily an item that you're promoting like we did at one time. It's.
As a matter of fact, in the past for Veterans Day, they'd go out and buy a tree and plant it out there to put the star ornaments on it for the families.
Yeah.
And we decided this time, and we're going to take it out of pocket. So if somebody wants to help us, we're going to go ahead and we got with Maria and we're going to plant a live tree, a cedar, right behind the moor so those ornaments can go on it and it'll be a permanent fixture. And we were going to pay for it out of pocket. If somebody wants to give, we most certainly would take it and it will be wisely used and accounted for. So yes, thank you very much.
Any other questions for the veterans? Okay. That covers all of our committees that are going to report tonight. Is that right? Okay. I recognize the, the manager for his report.
I'll call on Ms. Miller to go over the Talk of the Town report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Counsel before you this evening is your September report. Updates on specific requests and items that council has brought to our attention as well as our Garner Info app analytics. So taking a look at page one, I just want to highlight a few items for you. Excited to share, if you haven't driven by and seen it yet, but we have our new bus shelter installed at the senior center. It's a beautiful new shelter. It's hard to miss. It's red. And so we're excited to have that, not only for our bus riders, but there's also a trash can now. And that's been an area where we've struggled to kind of keep it cleaned up. And so now there's a trash can that people are able to use as well. So we're excited to have that new addition to town. In addition to the new bus stop that we have in this part of town, we were also able to, Ms. Behringer brought to our attention that our All America City sign was showing some wear and tear and needed to be cleaned. And so our Public Works team was able to clean it. It took several cleanings, but it looks brand new. And so we're excited to have that, that sign sort of stand out there in front of the park. One of the other items that was brought to staff's attention were several damaged or broken utility boxes and pedestals around town. Staff has reached out to AT&amp;T and Spectrum to identify all those and get them repaired. And we're happy to report that at most locations, they've been repaired or the repair is underway. So staff has spent a lot of time locating the damaged pedestals or utility boxes and working with our partners, utility partners to get those repaired. So we're excited to share that. I also wanted to bring to your attention that the Meadowbrook Dam improvements RFP was issued on the 7th. It closes on October 5th. We expect to bring a contract to council for consideration this fall. And so we'll be getting that work done probably started in early 2024. On the next page of your report is your monthly analytics for the Garner Info app. So we had 43 requests over the last 30 days or so. 86% of those requests were completed or in progress at the time of the report was generated. And 79% of those items that were submitted were responded to by Public Works and inspections. And so they, they tend to be the, the busy departments. You'll see on the left-hand side the type of requests and that we received over the, the last 30 days or so. And once again, we're seeing the seasonality of these kind of requests. So we've, we've had quite a few requests submitted from street sign maintenance to miscellaneous issues regarding our streets. And so we, we tend to see this kind of vary depending on the season as well. So that is all the updates that we have for you as far as Talk of the Town. Happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Are there any, counsel, questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, was there anything else?
I'll mention just a handful of events here real quick. Open house-style public meeting on Thursday, September 21st from 4:00 to 6:30 in the training room here on the second floor of the town hall about the upcoming sidewalk improvements along Garner Road and Avisboro Road. It'll offer opportunity for the residents to comment on the design plans and input on any final design and construction. The Downtown Garner Association's first ever market on Main, I don't know, Dellinger, Mr. Dellinger, you, council member, you want to cover that? Okay. So the, the Downtown Garner Association is, is, I guess this is going to be their inaugural market on Main. Previously, they were working with an outside vendor or provider. So that relationship no longer exists. So the, the DGA is going to take over promoting those. And so the first one will be held Friday, September 22nd from 6:00 to 10:00. It'll be a variety of vendors, food trucks, entertainment for people to enjoy. And hopefully you're not, you're not going to see any differences. Hopefully be better, even better. We got a lot of local, our staff and local residents that are volunteering on that group that are going to spearhead that, that change. The Fall Big Sweep and Litter Sweep in Garner will be Saturday, the 23rd from 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. And volunteers will go out and clean various roadways and do some of the, the streams and waterways. Have onsite registration at the Holly Shelter beginning at 8:45 at, and that's in White Deer Park. The Trick or Eat Food Truck Rodeo, another event sponsored by the Downtown Garner Association, will be held on Main Street on Friday, September 29th from 6:00 to 10:00. And it'll feature a dozen food trucks as well as local artisan vendors. You can visit the downtowngarner.com or Downtown Garner Facebook page for more information and updates. That concludes my reports.
Okay. Any questions for the manager or for Ms. Miller and her? Okay. Let's go to council reports. Start with Mr. Vance to my right.
I don't have a report tonight.
Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, just a couple of items. There was a, the public meeting last week at the White Deer Nature Center about the Greenway. We had a really good turnout there. There was a lot of good feedback from the public. A lot of council was there. And then last night at our Parks and Rec, we discussed it as well. Mr. Blasco from Withers Ravinell came and did a presentation and we got some good feedback from that advisory board as well. So people are really excited and have questions about the boathouse. We'll get to that next week, I guess. Do you have two text amendments I would like to sponsor? So I'd like to have the Planning Department draft two text amendments for council's future consideration. One would add a second public hearing for items coming to council after Planning Commission. The other is that all public hearings would be set by council by affirmative vote. And also related to the agenda, I'll repeat again, that slides that are presented should be in the agenda with us so we can look at all of it together. Sometimes the information's either presented differently or there's additional or less information presented. And that hinders the ability to prepare and ask appropriate questions. Sometimes the questions are asked in the slides that are presented. So it's, you know, it's lookative on the effort side in preparation. So those are my items. That's all I've got. That's all I've got.
Dellinger?
Uh, yes, just a couple of things. Um, the, um, there are some bushes overhanging the sidewalk on 108 West Garner Road that need to be trimmed. They're hanging pretty far out and pretty far down. Um, that's a, um, rental property at the corner of Penny Street and West Garner Road. And the second thing is I got an email a couple of days ago from Jeremy Bradham with Capital Area Preservation wanting to know if council members, any council members are coming to the dinner this coming, uh, meeting this coming Monday night, the 25th, where the historic, uh, the depot, preservation of the depot and what goes on there is going to be highlighted. Uh, and so I am going, but he asked for a report on who else might be coming.
Trying to remember if, yeah, I always planned to go.
Okay.
I don't know if there was a registration form I needed to fill.
Uh, you do need to let Ms. Gibson know.
I think she already registered.
Yeah, I think she inquired and.
Well, that's what I thought too, but he seemed to, he didn't know. So, okay.
I'm going to check with.
Right, so.
Okay.
I think Councilmember Vance, Councilmember Behringer, Mayor Marshburn, and I are signed up to attend.
I have a conflict, so I can't go.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Bradburn did not, he's had some conflicting communication there.
That may have been done, the registration may have been done after you spoke to Mr. Bradburn.
Well, it could have been.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Mr. Singleton?
Oh, sir, I appreciate the information provided in the, uh, uh, at the end of our agenda package, updating us on, uh, various projects and also some of the, uh, issues that inspections and planning are dealing with. Thank you.
Matthews?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, uh, I need to put in for an excusal for our meeting on Thursday. I'm flying out to California tomorrow morning bright and early for a week and, uh, visiting a daughter and her naval husband I've not seen in quite a while. So we already had that scheduled when that come back. So, uh, I need to request an absence on Thursday. If not, I would have been there.
I can meet our meeting next Tuesday either?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll come back Monday.
Okay. To the week, I'm the biggest here.
Yeah, okay.
It's Garner Week.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that I, that slipped my mind here, and that, and that is in celebration of, uh, National Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, on, uh, earlier this month, uh, the day, I think it was September 8th, that, uh, was able to attend the, uh, uh, the Festival Latino, uh, at the, uh, at the Recreation Center. Uh, it was well attended, well done. Uh, I still got a little moves, I still, with the, with the music and, yes, a little moves. Uh, so it was, it was a good time had by all and it was an honor to be there and to be a part of the celebration. So it was a good time.
Thank you, thank you, okay. Um, the mayor would observe, speaking of celebrations, I did, uh, go to the, um, auditorium area for that, I guess it was our 100th birthday. Um, and, um, listened to the group that was playing. I did get a, uh, from a former town employee, some disappointment that maybe, I don't know if the, uh, the auditorium would have been featured a little bit more, had people coming inside and maybe some tours done or whatever. But anyway, uh, I just would share that for future use. And Mr. Matthews, consistent with what you're saying, I, I need an excused absence myself for the work session that's coming up on the 26th. It's next week, isn't it? Um, yeah, I have a trip out of town planned that was planned before I realized that was going to be a work session night, I believe. So, um, I've already conferred with the, um, with the mayor pro town and, uh, he will step in and fill in ably as he has done on other occasions.
Pass the gavel down here now?
I'm sorry?
We'll pass the gavel down here now.
Well.
I'm kidding with you.
So, uh, that, that, that's all the, uh, reports that I have. So, um, we do have a, uh, let's see, I haven't gotten to the, I skipped the attorney, didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. Do you have any reports?
I don't have any reports tonight, so that's why.
Okay, thank you, I'm glad. Um, closed session, uh, items, uh, I guess do we need to recite those again? Uh, that Mr. Singleton motioned at the beginning of our meeting.
Yes, you need a motion to go into closed session.
Okay.
Will we do that now? Are you finished?
Yeah, yeah, I'm finished, yeah.
Can I mention one thing real quick before we do the closed session? Just a reminder that, um, we have the Affordable Housing Workshop starting at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday in the training room. So just want to remind everybody of that.
Okay. Good, thank you. Yes, Ms. Singleton?
We'll move, we go into closed session pursuant to N.C. General Statute, Section 143 318, 11A5, to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiating position regarding such real estate. And also North Carolina General Statute 143, uh, 138, 11A3 for potential, uh, litigation.
Is there a second?
Second there.
All right, if you may probably say it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to declare that, um, this meeting will move to a closed session and I think we need to move to the closed session.
The players at the council is back in regular session having gone into a closed. County attorney if she will briefly recap or review the closed session business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town council met in closed session pursuant to North Carolina general statutes 143-31811A3 to receive an update on potential litigation and also A5 to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiating position regarding such real estate. Direction was given to staff but no motions were taken or any final decisions taken in closed session.
Okay, thanks so much Ms. Jones. Any council members have anything else for the good of the cause? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. If you favor the motion, vote aye.
Aye.
And I declare that's a unanimous vote and I declare this meeting of the town council to be adjourned.[1715.12][1715.12][Music]